A special meeting and continuation of the meeting from last Thursday of the Arcatale City Council. Can I have a roll call, please?
May I?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cortino.
Here.
Councilmember Lottler.
Here.
Councilmember Carrera.
Here.
Councilmember Carrera.
All right.
Picking up from where we left off last time, I would accept a motion on to adopt the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
So any member of the public who would like to comment on this item, please come forward. Seeing none, turn it back to council. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Old Business.
Next is Old Business, provide direction on ordinance number 1527, ordinance of the City Council to save Arcatale, amending Arcatale Municipal Code to establish regulations related to single-use disposable foodware and plastic bottle restrictions. Could I have a staff report, please?
Okay, I'll introduce this and then turn it over to Environmental Programs Manager, Emily Benve, while she gets, she has a PowerPoint to guide us through this draft ordinance tonight. But I just wanted to say that, you know, staff has worked extensively with stakeholders, interested parties, and businesses around town to craft this ordinance based on council direction received a couple months ago. And we had several workshops. So that's primarily why it's taken as long to do our due diligence, you know, with the affected businesses and to get it as right as we can. The aspect of direction tonight means we have some choices for the city council to make, and I just want to say if we can get the council to agree on some of those options, then we can, you can approve this ordinance and move it forward tonight. So that's a potential option for you tonight is to approve it if we can get the direction necessary. So you ready to go? So I'll turn it over to Emily to walk you through the draft and give you an update on also staff's recommendations, because implementation is important and having the ability to properly enforce and implement is one aspect that we are trying to look at here. But I think primarily with the city attorney's guidance on this, it's an expansion of our existing polystyrene ordinance to include more additional products and to reflect the feedback that we got. I can't recall the date, but it was in the fall of 2019, the last time we came to you with this. So with that.
Good evening, councilmembers. I do this every time. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
All right, take two. You can still hear me? Okay. So this ordinance, I want to start by saying, is fairly complex and has some nuance to it. So I'd like to give a real good overview of the key points of the ordinance, the key points of the process, the key decision points that staff is specifically looking for, kind of as a whole, and then go back after that for question and answer and delving deeper into the details. So just to give you an idea of how I envision this staff report to move forward. So before I start off in the background, I'd like to read verbatim what staff is recommending that council take action on, given that there's, it's extensive. So initially, we would like, or we would request that city council provide direction on the proposed ordinance 1527, and that amends multiple sections of the solid waste code. Or introduce ordinance 1527, so that is if we receive consensus on the direction of the different elements, introduce ordinance number 1527 and ordinance of the city council of the city of Arcatale, amending chapter 3.5 of Title V of the Arcatale Municipal Code to establish regulations related to single-use disposable foodware items and plastic bottle restrictions, Title V, sanitation and health, chapter 3.5, waste reduction, waive reading of the text and consent to read title, to read by title only. So that is the ultimate goal. So stepping back even further, I'd like to provide some background on the ordinance that initially had its origins on October of 2015, and that was the polystyrene disposable food service ware prohibition. Since then, in January 16, 2019, city council directed staff to research other municipalities who have successfully prohibited certain types of single-use disposable foodware. In May, staff came back to city council and presented research findings of the different municipalities' prohibitions, and council directed staff to draft an ordinance to prohibit non-composable, single-use disposable foodware, as well as single-use plastic beverage bottles at city facilities. So since October, city staff has been doing outreach to various stakeholders. October through January, we held two public workshops to our food service providers, as well as two workshops to our renters to discuss those different ordinances. At the first workshop that the city held, it was brought to our attention that we could have done more extensive outreach. So what we did was we looked at all the business licenses, sent letters to all of our restaurants, food vendors, followed up with phone calls, and tried to advertise this meeting about three weeks in advance. We received a fairly low turnout, and one of the business owners mentioned that they hadn't heard about it until the last minute, and other businesses, it didn't sound like got the notification. So since then, what we did was we engaged the Chamber of Commerce, Arcatale Main Street, North Coast Growers Association, sat down with Mendy Supplies. So this is to say that we did another round of due diligence, if you will, with engaging some of our stakeholders that have networking to some of the larger individual businesses. So I wanted to give some background on that, because I do feel like it's important to present to council a little bit of detail on process of how we've been garnering feedback from entities. So that brings us to January. After doing the outreach, we drafted our suite of options for council consideration in developing a draft ordinance, and here we are. So key elements. Number one is who will this impact? This will impact food vendors, which are any stores or businesses who sell or offer prepared food within the city of Arcatale at a retail level. So that's grocery stores with hot food cases, that's food trucks, restaurants, that sort of thing. How will this impact the food facilities? So for the single-use disposable foodware portion of the ordinance, number one is, single-use disposable foodware would be required to be fiber-based compostable. I have that asterisk there because it ties back to some of the questions that staff is seeking specific direction on. So when you see those asterisks, just know that there's more to be discussed there. It would also require that accessory foodware, so straws, stirs, cup jackets, condiment packets, those smaller items, be provided to consumers only upon request or at self-serve stations and dispensers. It would require that businesses use reusable foodware for onsite dining, as well as charging a fee for single-use disposable foodware, which they would retain, identify on receipts, and the intent is that that would help offset potential costs with switching to this fiber-based packaging. Again, there's an asterisk there, we'll be delving into that a little bit more. In addition, future business licenses for food vendors would only be granted to those demonstrating adequate dishwashing capacity or to those who have been granted a specific waiver. And the thought process behind that is to start building in this capacity for being able to handle reusable for dine-in dishware. So this is a graphic I thought would be helpful to help visualize. On the left-hand side, what we're envisioning in terms of fiber-based, you have the top left, our straws, stirs, the clam shells, paper plates, those sorts of thing. And then on the right, those are the sorts of items we're looking to prohibit. So you'll see plastic clam shells, the solo cups, if you will. The bottom right is to identify bioplastics. So bioplastics, for all intents and purposes, are not actually compostable in city of Arcatale. So there's the framework of how the ordinance would apply, or what it would be applied to. Within that, we would like to build in exemptions and waivers. So exemptions would be more on a broad-sweeping basis. Staff is recommending exemptions for disposable foodware items comprised entirely of aluminum. The reason for that is because there's still a very good, very strong market for aluminum recycling versus plastics. Prepackaged foods would not apply. Many prepackaged foods are prepared outside of the city of Arcatale, so our thought was only onsite. And then the last one is perhaps the most significant, which is disposable foodware items not yet readily available in a decomposable, fiber-based form until appropriate options are available. So our thought process through this is that we've been learning in our discussions that the materials markets are changing quite a bit and evolving and emerging, and so some items right now, for example, liquid containers, are not really readily available on the market. However, that might change in a year. And so the way that we are recommending ordinance be structured is that we have this catch-all, if you will, and then by resolution, city staff on, say, an annual basis comes back and revisits based on how the market has changed, what items are actually available in this fiber-based compostable material, or what should be exempt. That's a little bit about that. And then waivers would be more on the case-by-case basis. If business documents no disposable foodware item conforming to the ordinance exists, and then furthermore, if waivers are to be granted on an individual basis, the alternative must be recyclable by Arcatale's franchise hauler. Exemptions and waivers for the eat-in clause include, the exemptions would be the disposable paper wrappers, paper napkins, fiber-based straws, and play-in tray liners. And then waivers are tied back essentially to businesses who don't have onsite dishwashing capacity and aren't able to contract for offsite dishwashing capacity. And those would be on a case-by-case basis. So wrapping this portion up to the decision points, the first question that staff is specifically asking council decide on is the definition of compostable. We have gotten enough direction to consider fiber-based compostable. There's one other layer of complexity, which is, I'm going to use the acronym, it's called PFAs. They're these chemicals that are in certain fiber-based compostable products, and they have been shown to have adverse health impacts. Science is still emerging on the potential hazards with PFAs when they're decomposing in backyard composts. I know enough to say that, I believe, one or two municipalities in California has prohibited them from being compliant, and the entire state of Washington has banned PFAs, as well as the BPI certification. Starting in December 2019, they are no longer certifying fiber-based products or any products that have PFAs in them. So that's the question we're specifically looking for direction on compostable, is do we include PFAs, do we not, given the current state of science? The second one is whether we should have a mandatory or voluntary fee or discount for single-use foodware. We presented five different options in this one. During our workshops, there were a lot of, there was not a huge attendance level, and yet most attendees of the workshop had differing views on whether fees should be mandatory, whether they should be voluntary, and whether they should be fees or discounts for bringing your own. And so that's something as staff, we wanted to put all the options out to council and let council decide what they felt was best. Conditions on when waivers are granted, so that speaks mostly to cost prohibitive, the level of cost-prohibitiveness. So essentially, if the alternative packaging, the fiber-based packaging, is this much more expensive or impacts your business in such and such a way, you should be granted a waiver. And then the last is timing for enforcing penalties. So the way the ordinance is structured right now is it would take effect in the short term, however, it would be a longer term before we start enforcing. And so that would enable city staff to work more hands-on with the different businesses and helping bring them into compliance and understand what options are there. I believe, I'll have to double-check, but I believe that we laid out one, two, or three years as potential options. So that is the first portion of the ordinance, speaking specifically to the single-use disposable foodware. The second portion is the plastic bottle waste reduction provisions. And so this ordinance applies solely to, as it's drafted, applies solely to city facilities, renters of city facilities, city events, that sort of thing. So the first element would require that single-use bottled beverages are prohibited at city property for events with 50 or more persons. You'll see that there's an asterisk there, that gets into the definition of a bottled beverage, which I will get into. Single-use bottled beverages may not be sold at city facilities. Vending machines at city facilities may not sell bottled beverages. The city will increase the availability of drinking water for public consumption. And beverages in containers greater than 21 ounces must be poured into containers that comply with the ordinance provisions. And so there's an asterisk there as well, which is to essentially discuss what type of container would comply with this ordinance. Exemptions are if the bottled beverage is necessary in a situation to protect public health, safety, and welfare. Strict compliance is not feasible, would create undue hardship or practical infeasibility. There are hydration requirements for employees working outside, so in other words, fieldwork, and no reasonable alternative exists, as well as bottled beverages that are distributed to participants at a participant athletic event. So think of like a 5K, for example, or something of that nature. And so the decision points that staff is seeking council decide on specifically are definition of bottled beverage. So that one is, should the bottled beverage apply specifically to water, or should it apply to all different types of bottled beverages? Staff is recommending that council move forward with just drinking water at this point in time. It seems like that's the most readily implementable, and we can talk more about that as we move forward. And then number two is beverages in containers greater than 21 ounces must be poured into containers that comply with ordinance provisions. And you'll have to forgive me, I'm going to pull up my specifics there. So option A would be, so let me back up a little bit and paint a picture. This is thinking, you know, a three-liter bottle of a beverage or a keg of beer that's being distributed to individuals. So we have this large beverage container, and we're distributing it into single-use, single-use, single-consumption items. So option A would be, in the event that these large containers are being distributed in a single-use fashion, they can be poured into single-use cups. However, the single-use cups that they're poured into must comply with the single-use foodware packaging provisions of the ordinance, so what I just spoke to early in the presentation. Number two would be the single-use cups that they're being poured into must be recyclable, which essentially means plastics just number ones and twos. And then option three, prohibiting single-use containers entirely, everyone would need to bring their own. For these provisions, staff is recommending option A at this point in time. That being said, it would be important for council to consider that right now there aren't really great readily-available, single-use cold beverage container options, or fiber-based cold beverage container options on the market. And so potentially, in the interim, those sorts of containers would be exempted through a resolution process. So I just wanted to point that out to make sure council understands how that would work, since it's a little bit layered. And then the last are the violation penalties. And so that's in section E. One would be, the violations are subject to the forfeit of their permit holder's facility use deposit. And then option B would be, in addition to any other remedy available, any violation of this article is subject to the following fines pursuant to California Government Code and Title I of Chapter III, Arcatale Municipal Code. So that's our standard violation process. So essentially, number one, are we withholding that deposit and/or are we moving forward through a normal violation process? So I will read this one last time to remind council, just kidding, I don't have to read it one more time. It's right there. That is what staff is recommending council do. Thank you.
Do you want to take them through?
The ordinance.
See if they can.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I mean, with the.
Sure. Sure. Yeah, so I think Mark had a good idea. Would it be helpful if we pull up the ordinance on the PowerPoint, and then we can go line by line through that? Let me find it.
So I think what might be the most helpful would be to go through the decision points.
Yes, and so instead of doing the decision points via PowerPoint, I'll do it via ordinance, so that we can look at the specific ordinance text.
You could just pull up the staff, or council staff report. Is that the same one?
I think so. Should I move them in?
Yeah. Just. Yeah, I could. It starts on page 84. Press the whole thing. Packet page 84.
Mark, do you want to start that, and I can pull it up slightly?
Okay.
Okay, so the first portion is on page 93 of your packets. And so that speaks specifically to that question of how we should define plastic beverage bottles. So option A, all beverage containers, drinking water, sparkling water, enhanced water, et cetera, or other similar product in a rigid plastic bottle having capacity of 21 ounces or less, intended primarily as a single-service container. Option B is drinking water only, drinking water in a plastic bottle, 21 ounces or less, intended primarily as a single-service container.
Hey, Michael.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so, you know, you indicated that staff felt like going for just water first, and why is that?
I think that in considering our ability to provide alternatives, so right now with drinking water, we have refillable water stations. And so in meeting with our stakeholders, it sounded like that was a feasible option because there are alternatives, whereas when you look at all beverage containers, it starts being really limiting for the facility renters.
So do you think that there's some reasonable timeframe where it'd end up being all? I mean, are we talking?
Because there are alternatives.
Are we talking like five years from now, or?
You know, that's something that we didn't think through, and I think that that would be a good potential compromise if council wanted to have a timeline for moving forward and becoming more prohibitive. That would be something to consider. Staff would still recommend the drinking water only, just based on our stakeholder input, but I think that that would be a good way to compromise between the two.
Yeah, well, thank you. I mean, I agree that if you want to start out with just a drink of water, but I need an end spot, like, within two years, we'll consider all beverages. Thanks.
I think we should just go straight for the all beverage, beverage containers, that's my opinion.
Well, I don't know, I just, I see the dilemma of this, because people want to offer choices, and yet it seems crazy to just ban water, you know, and not ban cola, you know what I mean? So there's an element there that just seems wrong. Let me think about that a little bit, I still haven't completely.
Just with clarification on process, I'm happy to share my thoughts on this, but are we going to, I'll share our thoughts on each single item before we do public comment, or find a agreement? I just want to clarify a process.
Well, let's just finish this particular step.
Okay, okay.
And then what I would say is that what we usually do is to see whether there are initial comments from you and other council members.
Sure, sure.
And then open it to public comment, and then we bring it back to the council and discuss.
Okay, I just wanted to be, because we were going down the line.
Yeah, so why don't you go ahead with that, and then once you're done, then I will briefly comment and then open it up to the public.
Okay, great, thank you. So yeah, for me, I think starting out with the drinking water, but I think having an aggressive timeline for all beverages, I think, would be good. I mean, five years to me seems longer than I would want. I think if we could do a year or two years, so it gives people in the community an opportunity to, you know, get up to speed on that, because I think the drinking water already will be a shock to some folks, but I think we do have clear alternatives for that. So that's kind of where I'm at. I think we can have an aggressive timeline for all of that, because on some level, from a public health perspective, we also don't want folks, I mean, sugar-sweetened beverages and other things, from a public health perspective, are not particularly healthy things that we want to force people into going, oh, that's the easiest option.
Well, I agree with Councilmember Pereira that I would like to have water plus an aggressive timeline for including other types of beverages. So at this time, I'm going to open this up to public comment, so if any member of the public would like to comment on this item, please come forward.
How's it going?
Good.
Cool. So my name is Joe, and I'm with the Surf Rider Foundation. So the Surf Rider Foundation is an environmental nonprofit based on ocean preservation, and one of the main issues we're concerned with is plastic pollution. And we have a program called Ocean Friendly Restaurants, and this program basically encourages restaurants to eliminate all their single-use plastic. So all the foodware, the plastic bottles, all of it, and plastic bags, and styrofoam-to-go containers. So I just want to say, on behalf of the Surf Rider Foundation, we support this ordinance fully. I would love a ban on all plastics and all plastic bottles, but the aggressive timeline sounds like a good compromise. I would just like to take this time to recognize the ocean-friendly restaurants that are in Arcatale. So we have Big Blue Cafe, we've got Cafe Brio, and we have Mazati's. And that is a growing list, and basically, thank you for doing business with us to those restaurants, and we look forward to many more. And this ordinance basically could shift culture, and I am a firm believer in act locally, think globally. So this is a really cool opportunity, I think, we have here. And yeah, so another cool fact, when we do. fully. I would love a ban on all plastics, and all plastic bottles. But the aggressive timeline sounds like a good compromise. I would just like to take this time to recognize the ocean-friendly restaurants that are in Arcata. So we have Big Blue Cafe, we've got Cafe Brio, and we have Mazattis. And that is a growing list, and basically, thank you for doing business with us to those restaurants, and we look forward to many more. And this ordinance basically could shift culture, and I am a firm believer in act locally, think globally. So this is a really cool opportunity, I think, we have here. And yeah, so another cool fact, when we do beach cleanups, 80% of the things that we find that are plastic are from single-use plastics. So single-use plastics are definitely the next step in the process in eliminating plastic waste and reducing plastic waste as much as we can, and really encouraging the whole reuse culture, I guess you could say. So yeah, that's basically all I have to say. Surf Rider Foundation Humboldt definitely supports this ordinance, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'd like to first honor the fact that we are on stolen indigenous land, specifically we are land, and that I'm really happy that things like this are coming about. We are definitely way, way too late, should have happened a long time ago, but I'm happy that we're in the right step. This is pretty mild, as far as what it is that we should be doing, but I mean, it's a good step. I want to make it clear that like, there's no kind of exception for plastics, like especially single-use plastics, but I agree that all plastics should be made illegal. But of all of the plastic that has ever been recycled in the world, less than 4% has ever been reused. So even of the plastic that is recyclable, nothing gets done with it. And so there's no like version of plastic that is okay. And also, I really want us to be talking about that label compostable more, because not only are there things that are compostable that are releasing toxic chemicals, like the PFAs that other states have eliminated, which we should definitely take lead of other states who have already obviously done their research on things like that. But also, normally composting things like that requires a very high heat that usually requires like a factory. So like, most of the things that are compostable that we have here, so like the things that kind of look like plastic, but they say they're compostable, those are only compostable in facilities that are in the city. And so we have to transport all of this trash to another city to be able to be composted, and I think that's defeating the purpose. So I really want us to be, you know, having really, like, is it compostable in my backyard versus is it compostable in a facility? So those are just my topics offhand. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Jeff Sterling, I'm a resident of Arcata. I think this is great, we're going to ban plastic. I don't support plastic use, but I find it concerning that we're going to start with water, necessity of life, you know, we have a natural disaster, it happens. Water's the one thing that we should preserve for ourselves. Just get rid of the sodas, get rid of the fountain drinks, but the water, I think that's, I don't think we should start with water. That's my opinion on that.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Meyer. I'm the president and owner of Mindy Supply in Eureka, we're a janitorial packaging company. I've been working with Emily on this ordinance. I support it 100%. My company is 100% on board with this whole ordinance. We've been running compostable biodegradable items for years now, actually in advance of half of the rest of the communities. But some things have come up with this, and I brought them into my office. I stock a lot of items that are more advanced than half the people even know of. We have a biodegradable foam cup out now that people aren't aware of. I have a straw now that is not paper, that is biodegradable, and actually holds up in water. So I've taken my office and advanced them past and be, you know, even what we're looking at now in the plastic realm. Some of the big issues that come up, I just want to touch on, are the cost. The plastic water, plastic reusable cups is a huge issue. There's a 300% difference in price. A lot of your local businesses that you depend on in your local area that we all promote will not be able to pass those costs on. They're outrageous. Some of the other things, the compostable biodegradable, I'm on track with that. We really push toward the biodegradable. I think it's a lot better, especially since we don't have a composting facility. The problem is, there's a lot of items out there that are not biodegradable yet, they're all still compostable. I stock an item now that is biodegradable and PFA-free. It just hit the market. I sell a lot of it to-go containers. All your to-go restaurant containers are PFA-free that come from my warehouse. So we have those on hand, with costs that are close to what they were before. I got an email this morning from WorldCentric. HSU uses all WorldCentric compostable biodegradable containers. The VP of their corporation volunteered to come up here and work with the City of Arcata. They are working with Berkeley, Oakland, San Francisco on the same kind of ordinance. So they reached out to me, they're more than willing to come up and talk to you guys to say what items are missing in this program, and what items that are coming in the near future. One last thing I really want to touch on is education. Getting the memos out to local businesses, local business owners, local, just the community on this ordinance to educate people is huge. I wasn't notified of this, I was notified by one of my customers. I'm on the Chamber of Commerce for every town from Crescent City to Fort Bragg. I never got a letter about this, so to notify the businesses that we all depend on, that we need to support our area, I think would be a huge benefit, and just educate them a little bit more. But I think that's it. If you guys have any questions, you're more than welcome to tour my warehouse, give me a call whenever you'd like. So, thank you.
And you can leave your contact information with the city manager if you'd like.
Yeah, I can, 100%.
Good evening. Carl Pelletts, I'm with the Humboldt Crabs Baseball Board. As a board, we support this completely. Our only concern is what's going to be the initial cost. We are an all-volunteer board, it's a nonprofit, and currently, I've been checking online to see what a compostable or whatever beer cup that we could use. It costs us, our costs would little over triple, just for that one item alone. And so our concern is not so much the ordinance, our concern is how fast we'd have to meet the requirements, as to what the cost would be, and then it's almost impossible for us to turn around and turn that onto a cost for families and family entertainment. We currently, we put in an extra water filling station in the ballpark about three, four years ago, and that was for people who bring in their own containers, that they would have the chance to fill up water without using any kind of a single-use. But again, we're just concerned about the impact that this would make on our bottom line, where we can continue to offer Crabs Entertainment for baseball. Currently, we use a 16-ounce cup. We do allow people to come in and bring their own cup, but with ABC regulations, we have to make sure it says 16 ounces on the bottom, so we don't get in trouble. I was talking with Maggie and with Jeff Meyer after your last meeting, which got interrupted, and currently, there really isn't a beer cup available that would meet your standard. And it probably, unfortunately, I think it'll probably be at least two or three years down the road before there is one that will work. And it's, obviously, Jeff has done a lot of work at Humboldt State, he's evidently working here with the city. Again, we fully support this, but our only concern is that there's some way that we can work into this where it's not going to be a financial impact to us, which in turn then financially impacts all of our people that come to the game. It's, we're just concerned about the timing on this. Can I answer any questions about what we do or don't do at the ballpark? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I don't have any papers or a prepared speech, so please bear with me. I'm a college student, Skylar Fisher, who goes to HSU, and I promise a lot more HSU students would have come if today wasn't like the first day of school. A lot of students were very passionate about this ordinance, hopefully getting passed, as well as I am. I work with RAP and CCAT on campus, and we believe in the mission of creating more alternatives for people to use, because especially with plastics, it's kind of like out of sight, out of mind, and people don't really understand that a lot of plastics, which have little recycle logo on them, aren't actually properly disposed of or recycled most of the time. So I believe that this is an excellent step, excuse me, forward to bettering the environment around us. And I think that if we don't do something incremental like this, and if we don't take that first step to phasing out single-use plastics in this way, then it will kind of bite us in the butt later down the line. So once again, I just want to say my support, and hopefully that this will, you know, become a reality. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Laura Glass, North Coast Environmental Center. I would encourage you to not be so timid with this ordinance. I mean, if the country of China, not known for its green leadership, has managed to take the bold step of outlawing all plastic in that country, and in a very short timeframe, this year, with one exception, a five-year window for farmers' market-type operations, but everybody else within this year in China, that's a huge step forward. They're not known for their leadership in the green world, but I mean, if they're willing to do that, I think Arcata, who is normally the leader in this sort of thing, should take the bold step forward and do this. Added benefit, I would remind you, and I don't hear too many people talk about it, is how much plastic is contributing to global warming. This is, plastic is now the growth industry in the petroleum business. Fracking has reached its limit as far as providing fuel for cars, so they're opening new plastic plants to use all this oil they're fracking all the time, and to make plastic. And so it pollutes when they make it, and then it pollutes as it biodegrades in the environment, again. So you can do your part for curbing that aspect of carbon, you know, emissions in the atmosphere by helping to not have us use so damn much plastic. I'm sick of it, so be bold.
Thank you.
Chairman, City Council, I appreciate your leadership in this area. I live kind of in the country between Fortuna and Riedel. Generally, I hang out more in Riedel. I was at their city council meeting, and I, you know, we don't generally know where all our garbage goes, and the fact is that a lot of it gets exported. I found out just the other day, City of Riedel exports their garbage up to a place in Oregon. And it's dumped there, goes in a landfill. And if we can take care of this, this plastic problem, it will help in many ways. It will help in the obvious way that we see on TV all the time with, you know, plastic here, plastic there, plastic everywhere. But also, let's see, what was I going to say? I'm surely not getting stage fright. Let me think here a minute. Okay, here it is. The plastic that gets recycled makes our landfills smaller. In other words, it doesn't go in the trash can. So if we're thinking of a single trash can, for example, if we recycled our plastic, then that trash can gets less full come pickup time, okay? And I know we can all kind of envision that. And so therefore, it helps with the landfill problem. So as the previous speaker was saying, that China has taken a leadership role, and we appreciate that, we appreciate the State of Washington taking the leadership role. And I very much appreciate your city. I've driven all the way up here from Riedel, just to observe and to find out what is being done, and I'm very impressed, and I would like to highly encourage you to continue on with this process, and be very vigilant, and take that leadership role in the state, so that, so that soon one day, just like the smoking ordinance is years ago, the one, started out with one little restaurant in Downey that wouldn't let people smoke, and now, and now we have the advantage of no smoking wherever we go, whether it be a restaurant or library or anywhere. So just take that leadership role, be aggressive, and it's appreciated very much. And I know it will take hold all across California once you get started. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Maggie Gaynor. I'm from Zero Waste Humboldt, and I also serve on the board of the North Coast Environmental Center. I really have to start by thanking staff for being so good and so thorough. I'm a very impatient person, and you really put the time in to explore all, everything that can affect implementation. Thank you. I would encourage you to make sure you've got both kind of the legal, environmental definitions down as part of it, because bio-based, compostable, there are about three or four terms that are used interchangeably, and even often used incorrectly. Plastic is still plastic, and if it biodegrades, it just means that it's going to be smaller and smaller plastic in the food you eat. So, you know, I want you to stay to fiber-based containers as much as possible. I'll say that environment doesn't have a voice, the things that have caused global warming doesn't really have a voice, and so I'd hope that the environmental organizations of Arcata and Humboldt County would be a part of your stakeholders. We never really received a notice about any of the workshops or anything, and we could be providing valuable input from our expertise of working with plastics in particular. I'd urge you for, if you decide to not be bold and go slower and incremental, I'd ask you to make a strong commitment of a frequent evaluation, at least annually. Now's a good time for X, Y, and Z changes in the conditions to include the sugar drinks and the sodas that are in plastic bottles. Same way with all the other kinds of things that are implementation, you don't feel like you can quite do it right now. Annual evaluations, it's more work on you, but I think it is coming. Everyone's spoken so far about that. Entrepreneurs are coming up with new ways to address this. And then I'd urge that, I don't know, it's been a little, it's been a couple of years since I've looked at your contract form for people who rent city facilities, but they should be tracking. That's going to be one of the most effective things, is weigh how much trash they have now, roughly, I mean, you can take a snapshot and you can tell one-third of it is plastics. The last thing that I would say is, I'm a little bit confused. Do you want us to comment each time there's a decision point? Or this is it?
This is it.
Oh, good. Well.
What? What? What?
We have, we have, we have the items that need comment.
Mm-hmm. Well, if the council's pleasure is to open it again, then I would. Later in the process.
Okay. I have a different, let public comment finish, and then I'll have a comment about the process.
All right, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Joanne McGary, and I appreciate this happening now. I wish it had happened, you know, sooner, but I also appreciate that the council, back in September, on the 18th, at their council meeting, passed a resolution declaring a climate emergency, and what the person from the North Coast Environmental Center said about carbon emissions and plastic industry increasing because of the need to find uses for the petroleum-based products, and that the urgency of the emergency means that aggressive means now, not even later. So let's just go for it, is my opinion. And we need to mobilize like the World War II mobilization took place, and there was rationing, there was all sorts of things that took place to make things work in that particular time period. We need an urgent action locally for the global needs, and so I say, go for it all, don't be incremental for too long, and not even one year. And I just say, do it now and be brave. And I just say, do it now and be brave, bold, and we will be on the map and we will be the leaders, and thank you very much for really considering this. And remember, you have an emergency declaration about carbon emissions, and this is one of the important components of that, so thank you.
Thank you.
So turning it back to council?
Yeah, I guess that's kind of why I was asking the question about process in advance, because it did seem like we were going down that path, but it, then I feel like what was stated was that we were just gonna finish talking about that and then open up to public comment and then complete the rest of our deliberation, so that was my understanding. That's why I wanted to check in, because we do have six other decision points to go through, and so that's, that's kind of what I was trying to understand about process for, because typically, when we have something pretty complicated, we only do one public comment period. I think of like the housing projects we do where there's, if not more, decision points, so I just wanted to flag that from kind of where I was coming from.
Michael, yeah, for me, it's the same way. If we, if we did each one of these items, we could be here for a couple of days. So maybe, could we go through all the items and then maybe take another public comment?
And what? All right, so we'll go through all the items.
And I just want to remind the council that this is the first reading, so it will come back. Ordinarily, we bring ordinances back for consent adoption, but there is another opportunity as well.
Yeah, you know, we just, as a council, have to look at each one of those items and make a decision, and I think if we'll go through and talk about all of them and then possibly another public comment, or a public comment on the next bunch, I don't know.
See, I mean, I would rather have it handled at the next meeting, but if it's the pleasure of the council to open up for, for further public input, then...
Yeah, I think we need some further public input. So I don't know if we can go through all five left. Maybe we can. If it starts to seem like too much, maybe we break it up to two and three, or something like that. That's what I would do. We don't want to talk about everything and then people get a little lost of where are we at this point, so, but I think we need to take public comment in now, we need to have discussions about it. It might just be on consent next time, or maybe not. Depends how far we get along with this, so...
What I would say then is to go through all the, have the members of the council go through all the items and then open it up for one time for more members of the public to comment again. It seems to be the...
If that's what, if we need more, we'll bring it up then.
Yeah, bring, bring it up at the next meeting then, so. Let's see, Councilmember, would you like to start with, we already have discussed option, meeting of, let's see...
So you're talking about, okay, so we've already...
About water versus other, that on page 85 is definition of compostable.
Yeah, hold on, let me get to page 85.
Can I say something? I didn't say anything about water versus other drinks, because I said I did want to think about it a little bit, and then people made comments, and I feel like now...
We haven't made a decision about that yet.
No, we haven't.
No.
Are we commenting on it? I guess I'm confused, so we're just, that's all on hold right now?
No, what I, what I, what I would like would be for each of us to go through, and take each item where there's a decision point and just...
Discuss your thoughts.
Yeah, discuss each person's thoughts on those decision points in this time.
Okay, well, you could start, and I'll just reflect on water.
All right, so the first decision point that I saw was definition of compostable on packet page 85.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, I was talking about the drinking water, the bottled beverage.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I feel like that was the one we discussed already, so we don't have direction.
But I have direction.
You need a decision on that.
Yeah.
All right, so what is, as a straw, as a straw vote? What's the sense of the council?
Yeah, so, I mean, my proposal would be to do the drinking water, and then a year later, do all bottled beverages, single, plastic bottled beverages.
So I have, I have some questions. So is glass okay? Glass is okay, and how about aluminum-canned drinks?
Yes.
Okay, then I think we should just say all drink, plastic drinks. I think, you know, under 21 fluid ounces, if we want to do that. I think, I remember making an argument against that, because it just makes people buy bigger sugar water, but I think we should just say no plastic containers, being as there are options, and we're trying to move this forward, and as was pointed out, we declared we have an emergency, so that's where I stand on that.
So you're saying it could be implemented at all at one time?
Yeah. I mean, then we get to discussing how we approach businesses, I have more to say, but this is, this is in our rental facilities, isn't it? Or...
I mean, I think, I think that, I'd like to make a motion that we do all beverage containers, option A.
Yeah, I feel like, because I think if we just do water, that's what people will pick up on. What? They're banning water? And it'll seem really dumb, and it'll just be frustrating, and that's not our point, that shouldn't even be the headline, but that will become the headline. And so I just think that's just kind of a, it's not meaningful, and being as there are other options, I think we should just go with it.
So what I would prefer for it to be a sense of the council and then have a motion on, on where we are collectively?
Yeah.
Okay.
Agreeing that this is what we wanted to...
Okay, and then the motion on everything we've agreed on?
Yeah, is to direct, at the end, to direct staff to...
Yeah, so I'll withdraw that motion and wait for the end.
So, Councilmember Watson?
Yeah, you know, like I said earlier, I do agree that we should go ahead and just look at all beverage containers.
And Vice Mayor Patino, what was your preference?
I'm over all.
Yes, I would too, okay.
I support, well, and actually, just one thing, because it was brought up in public comment, and I do appreciate the point about if we were in a disaster, access to water, this ordinance would give an exemption in those circumstances. So if we are in an emergency situation, bottled water would be allowed, so I just wanted to make sure that that was, that was understood, under extreme circumstances.
So Vice Mayor Patino, on the next item, on definition of compostable? Yeah, options on that?
I'm on option B. Option B, no Florida, no P A S.
I'm with option B, too.
Same here.
Councilmember Watson?
I have to look at it a little bit longer.
Right, I would support option B also.
Definitely got a majority.
Right, okay.
Nekada, you can give me a chance to sway your vote?
Nope.
Oh, you can, you can, you can try if you...
Yeah, you can try. You still have a voice.
Yeah, option, option B sounds good, thanks.
Me and Ming is the whole states have done it. Okay, what's our next decision point?
Page 101.
On, on, this is on the disposable foodware charges and the discounts. For me, I want a mandatory fee and a mandatory discount.
I agree with that.
So do I.
Okay, I don't agree with that. I, I don't really, I, I think for one, to getting back to the memos, to the businesses, I don't think we've reached out to the businesses enough and had those conversations. We should bring them to that point, and if it's more expensive for them, then that's a business decision they could make to charge 25 cents. So I just, I find that punitive without really much pro-education previously, and I know that you guys feel you did reach out, but everyone's in their own world, and we're all, you know, doing our own work, particularly people running businesses are pretty distracted by that, and so I, I feel like if we're gonna put anything off for a year, that is something we could potentially weave in, in a year, but even at that, I don't find the need for that. And I just want to point out, I mean, okay, maybe I'm just unique in this, but the 10 cents on a plastic bag or on a bag, it, that's not an effective thing for me. I don't find that to be effective, I don't understand it. Some people do it, some don't. I find it really mismanaged by businesses, and I don't get on their case about it, but I, I see that some people do it religiously, some people, they feel embarrassed saying that, so they don't say it, and all, and it's just, it seems to me like ineffective. And so I feel like I don't want to institute another 25 cents of an ineffective punitive charge. That's what it seems like to me, so...
I would rather have a fee. I would not favor a discount. I don't think that would be very motivating for people, that we, we have a structure of just a fee for grocery bags, and I think that we should do something very similar for, for these items.
So you're okay with the fee, but not the discount?
Yes.
Thanks.
I mean, I, you know, I like, I like the fee and the discount.
So it looks like we have a majority in favor of fee and discount?
Fee, that was fee and discount? Is that what I heard? Okay.
What is our next page then?
103.
103.
I'm like 10 pages below, I don't know what it is. I have it all, it's just in, 10 pages different.
On this, on this item, I'm, I'm okay with option C. That's 3X the normal cost.
Which section are we on right now?
Right in front of you there.
It splits pages, I'm sorry here.
Oh, okay, it's 95.
What is the, what is the section number for the next one?
5478.8. It's the waiver portion of the single-use disposable foodware provisions.
Which is not the same in mine.
Page 95.
No, packet page 103. Oh, we've got a new packet. Yeah, sorry.
Yeah. So it's... Page 95.
Yeah, page 95.
Packet page 95.
Yeah. New packet, 95. Section 5478-8 waivers.
But the question is before you is basically additional half-time the normal cost, twice the normal cost, three times the normal cost. Is that the last number?
Yep.
Or four times the normal cost. Those are the four options.
Yeah.
So I have a question about this just in general. So who's paying attention to all this? Who's paying attention to who filed a waiver and, and how, you know, they can't find material? Are we researching into that? Can they find material? I mean, this just seems like kind of a make-work project, that no one's gonna do the work, but we're gonna have it codified? And I don't, I don't find those kind of things interesting. I mean, I prefer to work with, we have a small business community, we can work with them, talk with them, educate them, and people in this town want to move forward with the things we're doing, and so to me, it seems, it just doesn't make sense, and, and who's really doing the research?
So I can speak a little bit to this, to, I think first, it's important to separate exemptions versus waivers. So to speak to the research of what's available on the market, what's not available, what's, what sorts of types of materials work well, what don't. Thus far, city staff has been researching, as well as meeting with our local vendors, our local suppliers of packaging, and so the thought is those commonly unavailable types of products, i.e. the liquid containers or cutlery, those would be dealt with through the exemption process. And so the intent for that is that all 105 food service businesses within the city don't need to apply individually for a waiver. They're all exempt for these certain product types. We would have on our city website, as well as we would be working with businesses in a more hands-on fashion after the ordinance, if the ordinance is approved, to help educate businesses of what, with what works, what doesn't, what's available, what's not. The waiver is more for a specific item that isn't exempted, so if a business, for some reason, if a business could show, could demonstrate that their business operation was going to be significantly impacted, as defined by the ordinance, for this specific item that's not generally exempted, then we would work with them to grant them a waiver or not. Does that help to clarify the process?
Yeah, no, I, I got that. It just, again, just, just seems like a lot of work for not that much benefit when, basically, you know, if people are using these kinds of things, I mean, maybe somebody has something really unique, but I think generally, you see the same stuff at everybody's places, and anyway, that's, that's my sense of it.
I mean, this may not get invoked much, but it provides some flexibility for some business years from now, or now, currently, that has some specialty thing to petition us, Environmental Services Director, for a waiver, and we just need some criteria for it, so it's not arbitrary, you know?
So can, can you, just, just to clarify, the purchase item costs 50%. So if it's, if it's 50% more than the cost of something else that they're, like, say, the beer cups, he's saying that they're, I forget what he said, three times.
Three times.
So then they need to get a waiver, or they need to just decide they could charge people 25 cents more for that beer, or something along the line, is that what you're saying? And that's kind of a business decision that people make, whether they can charge 25% more, or 25 cents more for a beer, or, I mean, so how are, how is staff gonna make that decision? How is staff gonna say, oh, you're right, you can't charge 25 cents more for that beer? What are you basing that on? I have no idea. And, and it's just like, so it seems like we're too getting into business decisions, and I don't think that's the role of the city. I think the city should just lay out that we're looking for, you know, I mean, and I understand what you're doing, because you're sort of anticipating future problems and trying to answer them already, but I don't know. I guess I just think, like, how is Emily gonna make that decision? That, it's true, Carl can't charge 25 more cents for the beer. I mean, I don't even know if that's true or not, but maybe it is, maybe it's not, but you have, now you're the one making that decision.
No, I don't think staff, yeah, staff is not gonna get into that level of decision-making. The question before you is trying to give staff some clear criteria. If somebody comes and says, I can't move to a fiber-based compostable product because it costs three times as much as my regular product, the only advice or decision that Emily is making at that point is, yes, you're right, there's nothing on the market, or she does the research and says, no, actually, you know, these three suppliers carry these three items, and they're all only one and a half times the cost, and that falls within the ordinance, so you're gonna be required to move to one of these three items that is available locally, or this one item that's available locally. So that's, that's really the only decision before you, is to try to provide staff with direction on how much more does this council want to require businesses to pay in order to comply with this ordinance, because we know making this shift, at least at this point in the marketplace, will have some increased cost to most businesses to make this shift and transition. The question is, how much of cost do we want to require? And then each year, we will be doing a scan of the market to say, okay, additional materials have come into play, this is the cost break as we know them, this is the compliance schedule that won't have to be based by ordinance, but simply by resolution, and then restaurants and stores will go off of that list unless they decide, mm, nope, something's too expensive, then they come and we look through what their options are specifically. So, I mean, I, I understand that it is challenging to put these in place right now, because it does take a little additional staff time, but I think once we get into it, for the most part, it'll be fairly standardized, and there will maybe be a handful of materials that we're looking at at an individual basis in any given year.
I just don't like, you know, just this simple calculation of two times or three times, because what, you know, the, it actually matters what the cost is. Are we talking 25 cents to 75 cents? Are we talking $5 to $15? I mean, there's a big difference there. So if somebody comes in and says, okay, it's gonna cost me 15 cents instead of a nickel, we're gonna be like, okay, well, I guess you're fine, because they don't want to pass the 10 cents on or eat it in their costs. So, you know, I want to be flexible and sympathetic, I just don't know that this is the best tool. It just seems too broad.
Too broad and vague, also.
You could put a, both, if, if it's above a certain level, then, then it's, you could do it with a threshold for whether you do percentage or, or amount?
You know, I'd like to ask Emily, what do you think of doing some other schedule? I mean, is that logical to you?
Yours, specifically to Brett's question with, I think that because the scope that we're looking at is comparable prices, cheaper products, we're talking about all-encompassing single-use disposable foodware versus higher-line items, I think that the multiplier factor works, though I do hear what you're saying, Brett, and I think just based on the product types and the standard costs, this is a reasonable way.
So I guess I'm just wondering, maybe we don't know what these products are, but if we're talking, you know, food service, I guess I'm just thinking, you know, so everybody's got forks, so if we, if one company has, you know, compostable forks, well, then it seems like the other company could, too. And, and, but then, you know, they're gonna probably say, oh, no, but I can't afford that, and it's just, I don't know, it's just, maybe I'm just not ready for this quite yet or something, because it's just a little frustrating to me. It doesn't seem like it... It's just, maybe I'm just not ready for this quite yet, or something, because it's just a little frustrating to me. It doesn't seem like it makes that much sense. I, I don't know. We're, we're kind of basing it on, I don't, I, I can't even imagine what unique product that one company would have that they can't get recyclable that everybody else hasn't already solved, or, you see what I mean? I mean, maybe you're anticipating what that is.
Well, I think it would be more that it would set a precedent that one company would come, come in about a certain type of, of, of product. And, and at, at that point, if it were well-established that it was this amount more expensive, this time's more expensive than anybody else who came in, we'd, we'd get effectively the same exemption. It would be sort of in, in a list that environmental services would be maintaining on, on that type of product.
You know, jumping into this, I'm, I'm thinking, we pass this thing at whatever option we can figure out. And then, within the year, we'll know if we need to amend it. I mean, it's an ordinance. We can change it.
Well, I, I can appreciate that. And I definitely think we should have a review of this in a year. And again, that's, I wouldn't have even put the charging anybody anything, and then maybe think about that in a year, and spend that year educating people, working with people, instead of looking like the enemy, which is not what we're trying to be here, but really trying to work with businesses and work with our whole community and society to move us forward in a, in a healthier way for the planet and for ourselves. But it's not gonna look like that, you know? It's because it's kind of the way we're approaching it, I think.
Yeah.
Well, the first thing is, does the council want to have a multiplier at all? Do they think that this is a, a good thing to have in the ordinance? And, and the second one is, if they think this is a good way of having something in the ordinance, what multiplier do they want?
You know, and I, I guess I'm okay with staff's recommendation. And right now, I would go with Councilmember Patino with option C, if he still feels that way.
Thank you. Yeah, you said I have option C.
You know, again, we can try it.
Yeah, I, I support option C.
Okay, option, option C.
Just, just to say, there may be a relationship with this and with, when you choose the implementation date, you know, one year, two years, or three years, in terms of enforcement and what the marketplace will look like then. Because the, the more cities and state regulations that are driving this, there's gonna be more products available, and hopefully the costs will come down. But it's really economy of scale. We found out what the local businesses here, in terms of bulk and quantity, makes, makes a, a big difference in, in the cost, the unit cost of these things. So, but it's gonna be a target, possibly, one or two or three years out, so we'll have more information. And at some point, maybe you can revisit this, this particular item.
Right, and.
So, like, paper cups, wax paper cups, are, those are compostable, aren't they? No?
They're, they're plastic coated.
Really? I, I mean.
They have, well, it's actually plastic. So they're either wax coated or plastic coated.
So that can't work for the beer cups. Okay, that was a question I had.
So your very next decision point is actually when to implement the enforcement of these various provisions. And so that gets to your, your question with, you know, trying something out and seeing what happens. And if you want a delayed enforcement, then that's your very next decision point.
And I feel like, I don't know, I just feel like we've been talking about this for a year. You know, I, I put this on the agenda a little bit over a year ago. We've been talking about it for a year. To wait another year or three years, it's, I just have this feeling like we're just kicking the can down the road. And, you know, I just think it's, when it's enacted, it should go into enforcement.
So you're saying, instead of option A, B, and C, you want D, zero years? Okay, just so I understand.
Vice Mayor Patino?
I'm okay with one year. I couldn't go higher than that.
Well, to me, I see kind of multiple levels of this. Like, I feel like, again, the charge, like, any punitive elements we have, maybe put that a year out. If you're, if you're all gonna vote for it, then at least don't do it immediately while people are figuring things out. And what are we saying? What does enforcement mean? It's like, do we, we have to give people a grace period probably to use whatever material they have? Like, if you just bought a whole bunch of cups or something, you're gonna hope you could use those. So what do we mean by that? If, if, do we give people, do we say we implementing this right now, but if you have some things, you can use them for some amount of time?
Right, that's, it's to work through your stockpile. And all the other similar ordinances we, we looked at in the state, one year was the common, common one for that main reason, is to, is, you know, if you just purchased a bunch of, you know, containers, so you didn't have to throw them in the trash, right? You could work through them.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like if there's any waiver, it's that kind of a waiver, like, we, we are implementing this now, but we understand that you might have various levels of materials already on hand. And so, you know, giving a one year to use that up, or something along those lines, or maybe even less, six months or something. Anyway. That's my thoughts.
Vice Mayor Per.
Definitely no more than a year. And I think it'd be interesting to talk if we were to do something a little bit more aggressive of six months. To me, it's six months to a year is kind of that range that I'm, I'm thinking. And I could be fine with anything that's in, in that range. But I thought I'd just throw that out there as an alternative.
What does enforcement mean? That's.
Enforcement means two different options. One is on the city facilities. It means forfeiture of their deposit. And on the other side, if we find businesses that are out of compliance, once enforcement is in place, it would be just going through the standard municipal code infraction. So there's fees that ramp up as they, unless they come immediately into compliance. So it would likely, you know, I mean, we will run this through, similar to how we do administrative citations. We will reach out. We will choose education first. We will give a violation period. They'll be able to come into compliance. And if they don't, then they would be charged penalties.
I'd like to see the, the specific fees as far as the municipal code stuff, because just so we have a, an idea of what the penalties are.
All right. And those would be adopted with our budget, where the expectation would be those would be adopted with our next year budget in terms of what those fees would be. But if you want to implement that sooner, then we'd bring back that administrative citation fee checklist. And then that would come before you, when you would adopt this at your next meeting.
And with the facilities, I like the idea of the deposit forfeiture, but I would like some, you know, for example, like we do with a lot of things, at the discretion left to the city manager on, you know, was it a small violation? Maybe it's just a portion of it. You know, was it, you know, pretty egregious? So you take the whole deposit. It was something a little bit flexible.
You know, I also just, in reading it, and maybe somewhere you define this and I just didn't catch it, is you talked about that water bottles could be distributed at sporting events, and you likened a five K or something like that. But let's think of, you know, a basketball game or something at, at the community center. And so often, you know, the moms or the dads or somebody, you know, they open a big container, they pull out a whole bunch of plastic water bottles, and they give them to all the athletes. Is that okay?
So we do have that as a specifically defined term for participant athletic event. The current definition is an event in which a group of people collectively walk, jog, run, bicycle, or otherwise participate in a sport or similar activity on city property. So yes, that would include the basketball question, in that it would not necessarily apply to the participants of the athletic event. Another thing I would point out right now, event, is defined as, the current threshold is fifty people or more. So whether or not a basketball game would rise to that threshold is another point to consider.
And both of those things are on my list for things I would like, exemptions I would like removed. I don't, you know, I just don't want plastic containers in our facilities.
Yeah, and it certainly seems like, let's take the five K event. If you're having, putting on a five K and you've got a hundred participants or something, I mean, that's a perfect setup situation to bring a big container of water or something that you want and have cups, and just give them to people. And, and that seems almost better than, you know, trying to do it with a smaller group. I mean, you, you have a little more planning going in, and you, you could easily supplement the water without having to have single-use water containers.
I agree with that. But back to, back to the time period that I would support one year, because I think that's a reasonable time for people to, businesses to find alternatives that comply with the proposed ordinance.
Can I ask, when would the time clock start on that year? I mean, how, say we wanted to, like, introduce it tonight?
It would start thirty days after the date it gets adopted. So thirty days after your second reading.
Ballpark a couple of months before it would.
April, first week of April.
Can we really pick any date and do it retroactive?
No.
No.
You can pick any date prospectively, but you can't go retroactive for the effective date of an ordinance.
For the timeline, I'm just thinking, if we are doing something close to a year, perhaps doing January first, twenty twenty-one could be a good date of, like, it's a, it's an, I mean, it matches up with a fiscal year to pay, and businesses may do it differently, but it, it does at least seem to match up from a business sense of.
It's easy to remember.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Even though I'm kind of protesting this whole thing, I do appreciate that as a thought, because I think it's, it is a, a better date in a sense. And, and we can communicate a lot between that and say by the next year.
So is the consensus of the council to not exempt sports events as, as currently proposed by staff?
I agree.
Yeah, that's my feeling.
Yeah, that, that is my feeling too.
Yes, okay, we agree on that.
And I don't, you know, I don't know, yeah, also, at least on my page, it's number four, defines events with fifty or more people as a threshold for when the ordinance is applicable, and I would also remove that.
What, what section are you?
No, I, I have the old, this is from the old packet, but it's, oh, yeah, packet page eighty-seven.
The fifty or more participants is what defines this.
Actually, one clarification, I'm sorry. So right now, the participant athletic event is specifically defined. The event is fifty people or more. Then section five, four, seven, nine point three E speaks to participant athletic events being exempted. So I think what you're asking is to strike that section E from, or that letter E from section five, four, seven, nine point three, from being an applicable criteria to grant an exemption, or to apply to an exemption.
That's, that's the, the consensus of the council.
You know, the fifty, the fifty or more is the current regulation for obtaining a permit from the city manager's office for an event. That's, that's, we didn't invent that for this. That's, okay.
One other item that I would also like to bring up is on the aluminum, proposed aluminum exemption. Aluminum is very energy-intensive. So what I would wanna do is if anybody offers aluminum, to strongly encourage and, and have them make recycling of these aluminum trays available onsite and, and have that as a requirement, so that if they're being used, that they, they get recycled to the greatest extent possible.
We currently do that for events.
Yeah, so for instance, if, if a restaurant has, has aluminum, and we've exempted that as something that they're allowed to use as disposables, to make it so that people can recycle it, put it in a, in a container where it can be recycled?
Oh, if they consume it at the restaurant, rather than take out.
They consume it at the restaurant?
I just wanna clarify that, so if I have forty-nine people and I wanna use a city space, I will not be subject to this ordinance.
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, my interest is, however we come up with it, that that's not a thing. You know, one person, I just wanna make sure we're clear on that.
Yeah, maybe the thing, like, is you're talking about getting a permit for an event, which would say be on the plaza or something like that, or Redwood Park or something. But that's different than at the community center, because you would get a permit, or you would pay the fees to use that, even if you have ten people.
So my understanding is the fifty-person threshold is tied to the permit requirements through our recreation department. And the intent of using that threshold is, number one, it's an existing permitting criteria, so we can easily implement that. And number two is it's a way where you have a family picnicking at Redwood Park, using our city facility, but they're not necessarily required to comply with the ordinance. So there's not a police officer going in telling them that they're in violation or something to that effect. So that fifty person is.
Well, maybe we wanna have it at, for city facility rentals.
If you just say, yeah, associated with any permitted facility use.
Yeah.
Because we do sometimes have, you know, small parties of twenty that might rent Redwood Lodge.
Okay, that makes sense to me.
That makes sense.
So facility rental or, or special activity permit, either one would cover that. The one that's tough to cover is just the random tourists coming through Arcata who happens to have a water bottle and goes to the marsh or something. And, and it'd be hard to enforce, I would say, and, and patrol that kind of situation.
Next is five, four, seven, nine point one.
Okay.
Containers per Article Three requirements are okay. There are three options on that. So, Vice Mayor Patino? Five, four, seven, nine point one.
Old page ninety-eight. Or new page ninety-eight, sorry, if you're on.
Old page one oh six.
I know, but.
Yeah, it's on the screen, new page ninety-eight. Pretending to the size, the twenty-one ounce.
Right, I, I'm, I'm looking at option C for what I'm interested in on that. Instead of option, not option A, not option B, option C, no single-use containers.
So Councilmember Watson?
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, looking at option C. I can, I can agree with that.
Do, do I understand that correctly, that you can't, let's say you buy a big thing of squirt. Someone does that, and there you have their athletic group that they're planning. And so they think they're doing the right thing, because they're not using little containers, they're using a big one, and then they wanna give them each a glass of water. And they bought paper cups, because they're trying to be as recyclable as possible. Are we saying they can't do that? Okay, that just seems overkill. I can't, because it seems like there's ways to do that well. I mean, maybe that's not well. Maybe I'm not informed on, because I, I thought a wax cup, I've thrown in my compost before.
And so is option A pursuant to Article Three, is that the, it must be recyclable within the city?
Option A ties back to that earlier section, the single-use disposable foodware provisions. Option B ties to recyclable. So option A conceivably would be fiber-based compostable, as long as there's a product on the market.
Okay, so yeah, probably A, is I think what I'd prefer.
I feel like A would be my second choice on that.
What is your first choice?
Oh, I said option C, but my second choice would be option A. C.
C.
C as in cat.
Yeah, my, my choice would be option C. So I think we have a consensus.
I don't know that we have a.
I don't know that I understand the scenario. What, what, option A, somebody brings in a liter bottle or something, and they can use that as long as they pour it into our conforming cup. Option C is they can't use it at all.
You have to pass the bottle.
Yeah, they would have reusable cups.
Yeah.
Well, okay.
Well, reusable cups.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so that.
They don't have to all swig from the same bottle.
Totally ridiculous. It's just a, a lot of times you don't have the reusable cups.
Like in a sporting event, you know, if it's like Gatorade, they have a big, a big cooler of it. So that would be one way to have greater than twenty-one ounces.
Yeah.
It's, you know, in a larger container.
And then the question is, what, does it get poured into?
Well, they can bring their own cups, right?
Yes.
Well, that's it. But I, I feel like, I think this is something, for me, I would go with option A, because it seems like it's a little bit more doable today, and yet it also is living up to our materials use. And then review this in a year or so, you know, and. know, and see if we think that it's working, you know, or if people really need it, I don't know, that's what I would do with this. I, I wouldn't go to the most stringent, you can't give your baby a sip of water, sorry. You know, I mean, that's kind of what we're saying there, and it's, seems a little tough.
Well, that's not what I'm saying, but okay.
Right, yeah, no, I, I agree, I can.
I think that's what it's saying to me.
No, but I'm fine with option A.
Yeah, I can, I can support A.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I see your point.
I'll go with A, too.
All right, so it looks like, stand corrected, that, that the consensus is for option A? Okay, although I support option C.
So with, with that, I think to Councilmember Ernesto's point about starting out with option A, would we be able to, you brought up that we could evaluate at some point a more stringent option, so I would, I would ask that we have, kind of from the one-year mark of implementation, that we bring that back, and hopefully that there's other things, if there's other things that we need to evaluate, bring that back, but I think that should be definitely one.
Yeah, we talked about the waivers.
Yeah, but just to make sure that that's, we're giving a specific direction on that, I wanted to be clear.
Okay, I'm the same way, option A.
Okay.
On this.
So, next one that I see is 5478.4, administrative enforcement and penalties. So let's start with Councilmember.
That's the last one, actually. Oh, one more? No, this is the last one.
Is it? Did we not just do that?
I thought we did, we, I thought we said January 1st, 2021.
Oh, this, this is the penalties and.
So, please, Councilmember Watson asked for some language to be added in, that the deposit waiver, you know, could be partial or in full.
And the other thing is it can be A and B.
Right.
Nancy, you're saying this, this one right here could be A and B?
That, that was. Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Oh, I, I just was trying to condense it in my head.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Yeah, I would be supportive of doing an A and B, and just because I'm thinking of an extreme situation, if we have an annual event, or a regular event that's happening on city property, and they just go, well, it's the cost of doing business, we don't get our deposit back, that we at least have some process beyond just the holding of the deposit, it just seems like that would be fair in a, in a more egregious situation.
Right, so, Councilmember Ernesto?
Yeah, I agree with the A and B.
Yeah, both, please.
And is the council comfortable with adding the language that says is subject to the forfeit in part or in full of the violating?
Subject discretion of city manager.
So now, just to get clarity of what we've said, did we, are we implementing this element, the violating, the, forfeiting the deposit and potential other remedies, is that starting January 1st, 2021?
Yeah, right.
Yes, we said, okay.
Any other comments from council at this time before I reopen public comment? So I'm going to reopen public comments, so if any member of the public would like to comment on this item, please come forward.
Maggie Gaynor from Zero Waste Humble. My, I went along with, thank you so much for looking at the details and trying to think them all through, so this is not in logical order. Consider Earth Day, it's going to be a nationwide celebration of the 50th, as a, I think a lot of cities are going to use this as a time to kick something off. In 2019, one of the new words in the dictionary was single-use. I mean, people are getting this, it's coming along, it's a cultural shift, this will, I'm not saying it's going to be easy, but it will become easier than, in a, probably a shorter amount of time than you would imagine. Most of the places that I frequent are already, they're dining establishments and coffeehouses, they're already doing it, and they've got a smooth way, when their customers come in, they know what to expect. What we do at Zero Waste Humble, when we see good examples, we try to publicize the hell out of them, so everybody knows, and when H S U students first come here, they find the businesses and then, you know, that they know have integrated environmental ethics into how they operate. Don't fall back on recyclables as an excuse, it's been used as an excuse for 20 years to not do the right thing, so stick with your, as you've laid it out. Economy of scale becomes the challenge in, on the, on the Redwood Coast in Humboldt County and small towns with everything, and addressing that economy of scale is, is what, a lot of what we're trying to figure out. A number of the businesses that we've been talking to are saying, help us do a bulk purchase, negotiate a bulk purchase, so the per-unit cost for our small restaurants could be less than if we all went on our own. So there's, I mean, and they work together in Arcata on a lot of things like that. Behavior change research shows that whether it's cigarettes, or, you know, all kinds of things, if you, if there's a little something there that you pay extra for because you forgot to bring your bag with you, or whatever, it does, it may not change your behavior, you know, but it, it does, it does make a difference. I mean, that's the only real reason why it's part of the California bag law. I just went through this really fast, I think those are some of the main points. There's a few others, and what I'll do is I'll just type them all up and send them to you as a little summary, just from your discussions tonight. Thank you so much for paying attention.
Thank you.
Hello again, Jeff Meyer. I just want to touch on a couple points, you made some great points about cups. There's a big difference between PLA line cups, wax cups, paper cups, and just to put in perspective, we mentioned 100%, 200%, 400% increases. If I buy a 16-ounce paper cup for a cup of coffee, roughly $90 a case. The new ones, that are biodegradable, compostable, environmentally friendly, are over $180 a case. That's the kind of increase we're talking about. That's your local businesses that are paying that out. Straws cost me $12 a box. The new straws, $112 a box. It's not 100%, it's not 200%, it's a lot more than that. You're going to pass those costs on, that's hard for local businesses that are already struggling, and you're, you have 100% local businesses in your area, just like my 40 employees depend on our local economy. So, I'm all for, like I said before, there's just ways to structure it in, if it's a crabs park with their plastic cups, there's not a substitute out right now that is even in that price range. So, I think this is all great, and, great and fine, but I think learning about it, the education to the local businesses, I mean, there's a lot of local businesses you have in this area that have not heard about this, I guarantee you, that I deal with every day, Wildberries, Murphy's, H S U, Co-op, you name it, I sell every one of them, a lot of these people have not heard of this ordinance. You're going to put a big hinder on them, day one, to have a lot of local employees that with some education, or working as it was brought up, buying in large quantities. I buy truckloads of to-go boxes already, and to get them to Eureka is over $1,700 a truckload, let alone the cost of that PFA-free bio container. We've worked that into your local stores, this worked great, but to throw this at them day one, and not really sit down and give them a bunch of alternatives is tough for them. And I know you voted on some things, and, and they're great, the way they work, it's just, the more education you give to your local businesses, the better they work with you, and you're not going to be fighting against them. Other than that, that's about it. Like I said, I'm open to any of you guys to speak to you about, I mean, if you want to come and talk to me, I'm more than happy to. I just think there's a lot more out there that we can bring to the local businesses in a different avenue than saying, hey, here's a new ordinance, this is what you're going to go buy in 12 months, six months, or this is what we're going to do. Give them the ideas, the options, get their feedback, but really sit down and work with them in your community, and let them explain their concerns to you. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say that I believe that you all should act on this ASAP. A year's too long, we know the current status we're in when it comes to global crisis, and I just want to point out that you all are just talking about businesses, I have not even heard about how this might affect, for example, the houseless population in our community that might need these single-use containers, and not that I support that, but it's just interesting who you are including into your analysis on why we should expand this time on, on continuing to use plastic. So, please, if you all, you all are sitting up there, we should stop using plastic, and we need to think of all of it, from the production to the, to where it ends up, it's not just ending up in water, it's ending up in, in a lot of people's foods, in a lot of people's body, the burning of it, the way it's impacting, the high cancer rates, all of these things. We're a small town, but we should really be acting now, not a year from now, 2021 is too late, so do the right thing.
Thank you.
I think, you know, agreeing with the last, last speaker, the last couple speakers, honestly, I can see where everybody's coming from. You know, I go to the beaches out here, and it's crazy, it's, it's really appalling to me, you can see plastic debris, styrofoam littered everywhere, more than you see of the natural aquatic life, you see more plastic than you do see seashells these days, and that should tell us everything we need to know about the direness of the situation. I'm not sure the exact amount, but a, around quarter of a million-dollar retrofit was approved for the Crab Stadium a couple of years ago, and if the city has that kind of money, I know there's enough money to subsidize the local businesses that are worried about their profits being cut into by this, this necessary improvement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, kind of along those lines, I'm also curious, with the last motion that was passed, both A and B with the deposits as well as fees being implemented, this is going to generate, like, funds for the city in fees and deposits that are being, so I'm wondering if there's a plan of where those would go, and if that would further, like, if we are opening, like, a processing center, like, here locally, so that we're not exporting our recyclables that don't even get recycled. So just, those are, like, food for thought, and wondering, like, if there's infrastructure, I didn't see it in there, of what would be done with the fees and everything.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Scott Alexander, I'm with Carl's Jr. here in Arcata, and I'm not here to, to be a bad guy or anything, there's not a single person here that I haven't agreed with. Everybody has very solid points, and we absolutely want to be able to help this community. Currently, all of our products are based on, not all of them, but a vast majority are a fiber-based and clay material that are readily decomposable, but in an industrial compost facility. And in Arcata, of course, it's a small town, and we're talking about a backyard compost, so those products that we have that might work in other big cities that I believe a lot of this has been patterned after, just won't work. So again, we have no problem in trying to adapt to this, but one of the things that we're greatly concerned about is the clause for dining in reusable foodwares, you know, for a quick-serve restaurant, I'm yet to figure out exactly how to pull that off, you know, if everybody has metal cups, glass cups, ceramic cups, you know, you've all been to fast food, there aren't that many in, in Arcata, but we are one of them, and we will, you know, do what we can to support this as best we can. But as far as the unintended consequences of passing something like this, you know, some of the big cities have a lot more flexibility, and maybe we should, you know, just take a look at some of the results that they're achieving by this, you know, are the waste products going to where it needs to go? Can we pull that off here, you know? Soiled products, you know, maybe they're decomposable, compostable, but if they're soiled, you know, does that interfere with the process? So, again, I'm not trying to be a bad guy, but I would just like, from a business standpoint, to be able to say that we have a valid option, you know, to continue doing business in, in Arcata. All right, thank you.
Right, thank you. Any other member of the public who would like to comment on this item, please come forward at this time? Seeing no one, I will close public comment and take it back to council. Vice Mayor Petino?
We've given direction, yeah.
Any further?
I don't have anything further.
Yeah, I'm looking at old packet, page 86, and just talks about, provides waivers for specific disposable foodware items if, and I just wanted to make sure, you know, draw the council's attention to that, to make sure we all agreed with it. The first one, you know, it's, the first line is, which seems reasonable, is that if they can provide documentation that there is no disposable foodware item, you know, that would work for them, but then it goes on to say, or if they do not have on or onsite, on or off-site dishwashing capacity in compliance with the California Health and Safety Code. So, wouldn't that be, you know, pretty much all food trucks that don't have a dishwasher? How does that, so, you know, there'd be a lot of people, it seems like they would be excluded from the ordinance right there. Oh, yeah.
So, the clarification is on the dine-in, if the individual can, if the business can demonstrate that they don't have that, yes, they would be excluded for the time being. So yes, you're right, food trucks, they don't, they don't all have dine-in, but those that do, that don't have dishwashing capacity right now, would be waived from those requirements. However, in recognition of the fact that we would like to, as the city transitioned toward that reusable culture, future business license applications would be an opportunity for reviewing and ensuring that businesses are building in that capacity as best they're able to.
So, I'm a, I'm a business, and my dishwasher breaks, I'm no longer subject to this ordinance, so.
The takeout containers that mobile food vendors use would need to comply with the ordinance.
Okay, okay.
And then we had a question about the fees that we're asking them to charge.
Sure, so, the fees right now pertaining to the to-go wear, the mandatory discount slash fee, that would be returned, that would go through to the business, that wouldn't be a fee that the city collects, that would be a fee that the businesses are required to collect. The deposits right now for the, both collect or payout, right, so.
But the city wouldn't be involved in those transactions, and the deposit has to rental of city facilities, and that covers maintenance and, and everything else that goes with any, any rental or event on the plaza, or wherever it is, that's, those are deposits that we use when there's an, an issue that we need to keep that deposit to deal with, you know, say, so they broke something, right?
Right.
Broke a window, or, or caused some damage that required rectifying.
I feel like the only thing I'm thinking of right now that maybe we don't have is the administrative fine amount, so is that information that is not, can we come up with something? Do we need more time for that?
Well, that would be in the fee schedule, when, when we adopt the fee schedule.
Well, if you, if you have direction for that tonight, I mean, that would be fine. Typically, our administrative citations are actually a daily out-of-compliance fee, often, you know, between $50 and $100, this seems like you might want to set that a little bit lower to start.
Or higher.
Or higher, to start, whichever you want.
And then I, I wanted to just clarify.
But it still won't go into effect until January 1st.
Right, and, um, how about chopsticks? Where do chopsticks fit in? Are they compostable, because they're wood?
Yes, wooden chopsticks would be fiber-based compostable.
Okay, not the plastic ones. And then, just to clarify, because I assume that there's a little bit of confusion, we're moving this forward, we'll, we'll introduce it next time, is that what you're saying, or are we going to introduce it tonight?
This is the council's discretion, if you are interested in introducing it tonight, I'd like to go through and make sure I understand all of your different agreement points, there are a couple of definitions, I think, that come out, and I want to make certain that that is, in fact, your intent. So, if you do want to introduce it tonight, we'll just do that run-through, otherwise we'll take this and we'll bring it back for introduction.
I definitely want to, go ahead.
Oh, you do? Okay, well, and that's, I'll go either way with that, but my point was, when we introduce it, and then, it has to go through twice, because we have to have it on the, on the agenda twice, and then 30 days after that, it goes into effect. So, what we're talking about putting off for a year are the fees and the more punitive elements and things like that, so it'll be.
The violations.
The violations, okay.
Yeah, the fees will go into effect immediately, but what is delayed is the city's enforcement of the different...
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Just to clarify, too, that's not a year, because based at the point where the ordinance is going to go into effect, which would be in April...
Thursday.
That means it's less than that, so I just wanted to clarify, too, because it's like, not, even if we pass it, you know, if we could magically pass it tonight, it still, you know, would take time to go into effect.
And we have, we captured the 1st of January 2021 as the date of which enforcement would start.
So, I would, I would say we should go and go down the list of options to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Do it now. Do it right now.
Okay, so, the first is that this would be ordinance 1527, and then you would be introducing it by title, which means you have to read the title as it is written on the old packet page 92, it's a couple pages earlier in the current packet. And you would be then consenting to read by title, waive reading of the full text, otherwise you have to read the whole text. So, the first would be the, under the definition, section 5476, B, bottled beverage, you would be adopting option A.
A, is what we captured, yeah.
Under F, compostable, you would be adopting option B. Under, and I'm going to backtrack after we go through the option on a couple of points. The next one is, under section 5478.4, disposable foodware charges, you would be adopting option A and option C. So, the ordinance that is introduced will have language joining the two through some language like "in addition" or something like that, okay? The next one is 5478.8, waivers, and you have by consensus directed option C, okay? Then, 5478.10, administration enforcement and penalties. Section B is going to have a couple of word revisions, so it will say violations of sections 5478.3-5478.9 shall not be enforced until after January 1, or maybe we say beginning on January 1, 2021. Okay? Then, we have section 5471.1, sale and distribution of single-use plastic bottled beverages on city property restricted. Okay, before we get to the options, point A here is going to say, "No person may sell or distribute bottled beverages at any permitted city activity held in or on city property." Okay, so that eliminates the use of the term "event." And then, the option B is going to specify option A, that the containers for Article 3 requirements are okay.
Yeah, when you, you don't mean option B, you mean section 5471.1B.
Section B, yeah.
54...
Thanks.
Yeah, section B, option A.
And then, is there, oh, I'm sorry, we finished?
Yeah, and then, section 5478.4, the direction under subsection E for the penalties is a combination of both A and B, so, okay. So then, because of that direction, I think we are going to be deleting, under the definitions, section H, "event," and section O, "participant athletic event," because I don't think those definitions are used anywhere else. In which case, then, the rest of the lettering for those definitions will all get adjusted, but the caveat is that I want to confirm that, I want to go in and actually look at the detail a little more carefully, so assuming that's the case, then, that's, that's what I have, so, you had something else?
Oh, just the wording change to the language around forfeiture of deposit.
Was that all agreed to?
The all or some, or, yeah.
Okay. At the discretion of the city manager, okay, okay.
So, when we vote on this, there isn't really a way to have it recorded that we don't agree with some of these things? I mean, like, I don't agree with the 25-cent thing, but...
There you go, it's recorded.
That's just going to get lost, right? I mean, I'm just, not that it matters, really, I just wanted to think that through, so we're just voting on the ordinance and moving it forward with, I mean, it's in the minutes, I get that, but I just wondered.
Well, let's say, I'm ready to make a motion, unless there's any...
One other thing that I added, and I wanted to see if the other councils agree with it, of requiring it, recycling being available for aluminum, exempt aluminum that's consumed on-site.
I believe this is 5478.9 exemption? I think so. And it says specifically that disposable foodware composed entirely of aluminum is exempt.
Yeah.
I think his suggestion is that if someone is using that foodware composed entirely of aluminum, that there is an easily-available aluminum recycling container...
On the premises of it.
On the premises.
Can I, I've got to just add, not all aluminum that's had food in it is going to be recyclable, it has to be a clean product, you can't throw contaminated or dirty aluminum foil into a recycling bin, then it just becomes trash.
Like a burrito?
Yeah.
So, you don't think that's feasible?
Is it enforceable thing, or something, a lot of these things we can work on educationally, as we do on many, many items for solid waste reduction and recycling, but, and we will do that, like we did with polystyrene, like we did with plastic bags, and work with everybody. I mean, that's one that we certainly can, you know, promote, but I, you know...
I take it, I wash it, I wash the little foil with it, huh?
One option you could consider that speaks to the potential contamination of foil, as well as wanting to have readily-available containers for recycling, is, there are the cans-only containers, so if what you're looking to do is ensure that actual cans, beverage cans, for example, get recycled, that could be something to consider, though I do think it adds a level of enforcement and it adds an extra bin that businesses are required to provide.
Many of them are required to have curbside containers on their premises, anyway, I mean, all of them, actually.
Right, if that's not feasible, then we could let it go.
I have one question, just to be clear, and that's, do we need a definition for permitted city activity that we substituted for event?
I don't think, I mean, anything that requires a permit, I think, if we need to clarify that in a year, I think we could, but I think...
Okay, all right.
So, when I read this, show this tack-on at the end, you know what...
As amended?
As amended, all right. So, I will move to introduce ordinance number 1527, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Arcata, amending chapter 3.5 of Title V of the Arcata Municipal Code to establish regulations related to single-use disposable foodware items and plastic bottle restrictions, as amended, waive reading of the text and consent to read by title only.
I'll second.
You don't need to read the whole actual name, okay.
Wasn't that it?
Okay.
Right, and then, and there was a second?
Yes.
Right, we have a motion and a second, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, all right, and I am going to recuse myself on the next item, because I do energy analysis and testing work for Danko, the applicant.
We have a request for a five-minute break? Is that okay? Okay. I don't know anyone.
Okay, I'd like to bring the city council meeting back in session. The mayor has recused himself because of conflict with employment and the development. So I'll be handling this one. So we're going to talk about the Creekside -- the approval of Creekside Mixed Occupancy Residential Annexation Project, and the staff can open it up for us.
Good evening, city council members. Tonight, before you use the second meeting on the Creekside project, I've got a PowerPoint to go through that addresses some of the questions that came up last time. I'll also do a little bit of backtracking just to put some context to the decision that's being made. But I did want to emphasize that this is, again, it's a preliminary hearing just to get the council's input and make sure that we're on the right track for this project. It's been in the works for quite some time, and we do have all of the approval documents before you, with the exception of the development agreement, for which there's a term sheet that was included in your last packet. But we don't have those approval documents finalized, and so we're not ready for formal action tonight. We anticipate a continuation to February 5th, your regular meeting to start introducing those approval documents. If the council did wish to take some action tonight, the resolution adopting the EIR is ready and available, but I wouldn't recommend you take any other actions beyond that. So if I can direct your attention to the monitor. Again, just for a point of reference, this project is on the western boundary of the city of Arcata. On the central portion of the city, the project parcel is located here in red. It's a former mill site located off of Foster near Q Street and the Westwood subdivision. Also included for annexation, this parcel is included for annexation as the project parcel, but we've also included Enos Park Expansion Parcel. The park proper, and you'll see this in the next slide, is already in the city of Arcata. It includes play equipment, but the city of Arcata purchased this property in 1971 with park bonds and intended to incorporate it into the city and use it for park purposes. Also, part of the annexation are the right-of-ways for road and trail, these lower parcels. We'll get into this in a little more detail, a little closer view, but there's a portion of the rail corridor that's owned by the applicant that will be used for road and trail purposes. And then the portion of Foster Avenue that's currently in the county, out to the limits of the existing western boundary of the property, will also be annexed. So those are the properties that are being annexed into the city, and they're the subject of the first and sort of major component of the project that requires several general plan amendments to identify the land use designations, amending the city boundary, so on and so forth. Lots of maps that convey in our general plan what the use of those parcels are will be The project is a little more complex than just those annexation parcels. We have an extension of the rail corridor that the city will receive an easement to place a continuation of the Class 1 bike trail, bike and ped trail, that will go all the way out to Jane's Road, right around here, not pictured in this view. But that Class 1 bike trail will lead basically from Alliance along Foster through the connection, the new connection to Foster if approved, and out along the rail corridor to Jane's Road, where there'll be some traffic controls to get people who are using that across Foster onto Jane's. In addition, there's a segment of property that runs along the creek here that currently is an easement for the purposes of this property's ingress and egress. We'd like to ultimately secure that with working with the applicant for public ingress and egress to the property for residents to be able to access the trail or for these residents to be able to access Alliance, whether they're motoring in bicycles or electric vehicles, electric carts. There's also an emergency egress that goes out of the city limits. The new city boundary will be along this property line here. It'll go out of the city limits and back into the city limits as an emergency egress. We don't anticipate this being used for vehicles unless it's an emergency, but this will also connect with a bike trail that runs through the property out to Foster so that there's connectivity, non-motorized connectivity between these parts and these parts of the city.
David, could I ask you a question on that?
Please.
When we're talking about that easement, that's going to go right through Enos Park next to the fence, next to the next property owner?
That's correct.
How wide is that?
I don't have exact dimensions for you, but I believe it's 20 feet, and I can double-check with the -- yeah, 20 feet. I do have exact dimensions.
So it will be, it'll end up being a driveway, they'll cut the sidewalk and...
There's already actually a curb cut here. It will likely need to be redesigned. The intention here is that the trail will come through Enos Park and that this surface will be designed so it could either be used exclusively for that trail and/or emergency vehicle access and/or incorporated into some kind of court, whether it's basketball or footsle on that property.
Yeah, I just wanted to get it in my mind right where it was.
Please feel free to interrupt at any time to ask any questions. The other parcel that's important in this project is the parcel just to the west of the housing project parcel, which is also owned by the applicant, and this is the conservation easement parcel. So we're proposing a conservation easement. The way that this is described and discussed in the environmental impact report, this conservation easement is being established, one, because we have a green belt policy, and I've got some maps that Mark can share with you that show where that green belt is. But more importantly, these are to mitigate the impacts of the project on agricultural resources. This trail, non-motorized trail slash emergency egress, will involve covering ag soils, a small component here, the Enos Park annexation. The intention is to annex this as public facilities currently. It's zoned agricultural exclusive. Its land use designation in our general plan is agricultural exclusive, and so for the loss of that zoning designation so that we can use it for park purposes, not that it's going to be changing much in the near future, but to mitigate it now, we're taking these two combined areas and mitigating it about a four-to-one ratio on this parcel by establishing a conservation easement. Conservation easement will ensure that there's no further expansion of the city urban footprint westward of this property. That's the intention of it. So these are the parcels that are involved in the decision that are nearby. I'll also show you an image of a parcel, or a couple of parcels that the city owns in the community forest that are also going to receive some mitigation funding for restoration. Any question about the parcels in general? Okay. The project itself, this is the subject site, and again, north has been changed orientation. North is to your left on this screen. West is down on the screen. And the project will ultimately involve, and the environmental impact report analyzed, a future major subdivision that will create 32 single-family parcels that will have second units, a large parcel that would contain an assisted living with memory care component, and then a senior cottages-type project that may be for rent or purchase ultimately. And the current decision that's before you is to subdivide these three blocks, single-family, memory care, and assisted living, and senior cottages, into three parcels roughly along these lines here. So that's the action that's being taken with this current decision. The project will come back for further public review when we do that major subdivision or design review on the assisted living. Last time, the council considered including two access points to the property. We talked about a number of access points, and I went into detail in the staff report about pros and cons of those various access points. The current proposed is this one down here on the west of the property. And after analysis and looking at it with the city engineer, going over the various options, it appears that the best alternative for adding a secondary access would be a second access point onto Foster. This is the way, again, that the project was originally designed. Staff encouraged the applicant to remove this access point to reduce those points of egress, but it's totally legitimate to add it back in. The conditions of approval have been modified to reflect this change. And so if this is what the council desires, you'll look to your conditions of approval that were included in your packet this time. You'll see underscored text that adds this as a requirement that their tentative map reflects this as a condition of approval. Can I answer any questions there are about these two access points?
I mean, not about the access points. I was curious, what's in the bottom-left, what the parking lot is for?
Bottom-left of the parking lot.
The northwest.
The northwest, this one here?
Yeah.
This is just visitor parking for these residences out here, overflow parking. Recall that the project includes the extension of Foster to connect Foster East with Foster West. We have a schematic here that the engineering department has put together to try and convey in a little more detail what that would look like. You can see the extension of Foster coming here, making a perpendicular intersection with Q Street, like that to be as perpendicular as possible for a variety of reasons, traffic safety and so on and so forth, line of sight, with a stop sign at Q Street controlling traffic entering onto Foster. Both of these roads would have bike lanes up until this point. Foster West would have a bike lane running along its length up to Q, and the bike lane for this side will also have the option for jumping onto the segregated Class 1 bike trail. We'll have some intersections. The city engineer can discuss in a little more detail some of the thoughts about how to get traffic from the south side of Foster onto this bike lane, but there are a couple of options that we'll investigate. And so this gives you a sense of what this road might look like, the exact design, where this turns back onto the existing alignment of Foster. Still an open question. Questions last time about what we'd use this site for. It could be used for mitigation, additional bike safety improvements, some additional habitat or LID improvements. But this project is going to impact approximately 8,000 square feet of riparian vegetation along the creek here. And so this came up in our last discussion as well, and we weren't as prepared to discuss it at that time. Wanted to walk you through this and some of the statements in the EIR to the record about there not being enough riparian restoration on-site and the need for off-site restoration. So what this looks like, approximately, this is not, this is just drawn in, on the slide here. It's not an exact representation, but it's to give you a sense. The existing riparian vegetation runs from about 5 feet to an average of about 25 feet with some trees that were blown over in a windstorm, creating 100-foot riparian setback in this area along the parcel. This is the existing riparian as it stands now. The project will have a permanent impact of 8,000 square feet roughly, and the way that the mitigation is written, that's to be confirmed in the field so that there's a minimum of a two-to-one ratio of impact to restoration because of the extension of Foster. In addition, there's about 0.47 acres of wetlands, two and three parameter wetlands on-site that the city would regulate, city and/or Department of Fish and Wildlife or others would regulate. And so we're requiring an approximate 1.8-to-one ratio mitigation on-site as proposed. That proposed wetland, you can kind of see on the site plan. It's stated here, proposed wetland. It's a little harder to see with the aerial image, so I've removed the aerial image here so you can see it a little better. That proposed wetland overlaps some of the existing riparian vegetation. So there's going to be a temporary impact associated with the creation of this proposed wetland, approximating 3,000 square feet in this area where the riparian vegetation comes out to approximately 100-foot setback. The site has a proposed wetland that, again, creates about 0.87 acres, almost a two-to-one replacement that's defined by these little Y-shaped symbols designating the top of bank. That would be the wetland site. And so there's going to be a newly created wetland totaling 0.87 acres. Now, there's only one area that has riparian vegetation up in this corner. The rest of this is all upland, and if you've walked the site, you'll know that it's a pretty trashy wetland. There's a lot of non-native species. There's a lot of trash, literally, in here. And despite the fact that we had a riparian planting project a number of years ago, some of that's being overtopped by weeds now. So this created wetland will go in and remove all of that non-native vegetation, create a dish that's both fish and amphibian safe with an outlet back to the creek here and a couple of others, and then replant this with native vegetation. So this entire created wetland is going to be replanted with native riparian vegetation and wetland vegetation. And then in addition, the city has a requirement for setbacks from that newly created wetland that we've implemented. There's a couple of overlapping setbacks here, so we can go into this in more detail, but the riparian setback, the creek setback, is getting a full 100-foot setback with slight encroachments here and there, but basically the entire standard 100-foot width setback from the creek is accommodated in this project. The created wetland, we're allowing for a variable width 50-foot buffer, but there are only minor components of this project that actually encroach on that 50-foot setback. You'll see them here. You'll see them with the access road. This goes up through the creek over to Alliance. And then that entire 50-foot buffer is being planted with riparian and associated vegetation as well. And so this entire site that is essentially east of the boundary of the urban limit, towards the existing riparian vegetation, will be restored, enhanced, maintained for years to come. So to put this in context of the overall project site, the Wetland Riparian Complex will encompass about a fifth of the entire project site, which is fairly substantial for projects. It's a fairly substantial project, so it has a fairly substantial wetland enhancement and riparian enhancement. This entire complex will be a riparian buffer that extends 100 feet from the creek, which is at least 10 times more than the largest buffer on the east side of the creek. And so for all intents and purposes, this will be the riparian buffer for this segment. Now, we're doing urban stream renewal. We have to take it one parcel at a time. This is the best opportunity we have to create this buffer. We did not, however, allow them to count any of the created wetland or riparian complex in this area on-site towards the impacts associated with Foster. Now, recall, Foster is the city's road. We're getting through this project the extension of that Foster, which was, the lore has it, envisioned in the EIR for the general plan. So we're not allowing them to double-count this, even though this is all going to be riparian enhancement. This is what led to the statement that there's not enough room on-site to do on-site riparian mitigation for those permanent impacts associated with our road. That 8,000 square feet then is being mitigated off-site in the forest by doing approximately $26,000 worth of restoration, adding woody debris and upgrading culverts and crossings, and Mark can speak to the restoration that's planned up here a little bit better than I can. So that puts the context around the statement that there's not enough room on-site to do riparian restoration. Everywhere where there isn't a building or a road or a sidewalk is planned for wetland and riparian enhancement. Because we didn't allow them to double-count that for those two purposes, we're asking for off-site mitigation. Does that make sense? In addition, there was some talk last time about habitat connectivity. Gone through this with some folks in the community that were concerned about this and also with the project applicant, and we see an opportunity to really connect this greatly enhanced riparian area with the bottom lands that we're conserving through the conservation easement and through our green belt policies. And really what those look like is taking existing strips of vegetation or opportunities for strips of vegetation and ensuring that those have large native woody species incorporated so that there's essentially habitat corridors between the riparian and the relatively undisturbed farmlands. The applicants agreed to this, and it's included as a condition of approval. Commenter last time who was speaking on this item basically said he was thrilled to see this broader context and these included, these riparian, or these continuation, these corridors included as conditions of approval. He said the only thing that would make him happier is if we included several groupings of native woody vegetation at the termini of these corridors so that there would be areas for these bird species and various other small woodland species that are using this corridor to roost and rest. And so we've added this as a condition of approval as well. The applicant's okay with it. This was a landscaped area here to begin with. It was shown as a linear feature. There's no problem making it more of a boldness feature that has a little bit more depth and three-dimensionality.
David, on those corridors, what would it look like? Is it just going to be mowed grass straight through there, or is it going to be plants?
No, this would be trees and shrubs. You know, if I were to design it, I would probably look to put maybe some spruce and alders or something like that, something that's easy enough to maintain, that'll grow with a straight enough bowl, that it works as landscaping but also provides that habitat continuity.
If somebody was going to walk down that, I mean, or is there an alternative? I mean, they can walk in the road there next to it.
That's a great question. So these, right here, this is planned as just a, I'm sorry, a landscaping strip. And so this first one would effectively be supersize that landscaping strip and make sure it's amenable to squirrels and birds. The strip that I proposed over here is along a pathway, a sidewalk, and so this would be around the sidewalk, a buffer around the sidewalk. I'm not guaranteeing that this would be the placement. At this point, it looks like the most logical placement under the conceptual model. Ultimately, the condition is that they have at the minimum two landscaped strips that function as riparian function as riparian corridors, extensions of that riparian corridor, to be determined based on design. I fully expect that our trail that's over on this side will also probably be a third riparian corridor that connects, you know, to this end. So you'll have one in the, on either end and one in the middle if you did it this way. But there will still be areas to walk underneath them.
Yeah, I just was trying to understand it.
The other comment that came up kind of late last week, just before the meeting, was, hey, you know, this, this proposed conservation easement, you know, that was included in the first go-around back in 2007. It was never intended to be a part of the Enos Park mitigation. This Enos Park mitigation came up, you know, in this current iteration as part of the development agreement terms that, you know, the applicant would process our environmental document and, and assist with the annexation application. And they were concerned that if Lafco rejects this, because Lafco ultimately has the final authority as to changes in boundary, if Lafco rejects this and says, no, you can't annex this, they were concerned that this conservation easement would go away. We wanted to be real clear that that is not the intent, and I've added some conditions of approval language to ensure that the conservation easement is part of the project. It can be counted for mitigation for this annexation. But whether any of this happens, if the project is approved and goes forward, they create the conservation easement. So that, that moves forward. As we got into a little bit more detail and as we explored options and alternatives for organic requirements on the conservation easement, and after having spoken to a couple of the land trusts locally, I started to become concerned that a conservation easement, that is a land trust holding, you know, on title and easement for continued conservation, you know, if, if we run into issues not being able to find a willing land trust to take this easement, I wanted to expand the concept of this, that we could record something on title and require that their leases include language through the approval of the project that in perpetuity their leases would at the minimum have language that say that the operations need to be, not necessarily certified organic, but at least maintain organic practices. And this was for a couple of reasons. The certification process for a, for a property, a ranch this small, could be cost prohibitive. And also because if the conservation easement isn't formally created, if we can't find a land trust to take that easement, and if the city ultimately determines that it can't maintain or manage a conservation easement long-term, that at least we have a placeholder that will record on title and will stay on title in perpetuity that effectively eliminates potential for, you know, other development type on that property through these agreements. So I wanted to explore that in a little more detail with you if you have questions about that. But I've created some, some language in the conditions of approval that speak to that as well. So, long story short, this will be preserved in perpetuity either through an easement or through other title action, and the practices through either of those will be organic-like if not certified. I believe those are the majority of the, the issues that came up that I felt the need to address orally in the staff report. I know there were several outstanding questions about lighting, and we tried to address those and some of the questions about Enos Park. If there are any other items that we didn't pick up on in the staff report, happy to address those now. The city attorney and, and environmental services director are here to answer any questions as well.
I was concerned about...
City, city attorney is here as well, but city engineer is who I was referring to, actually. Thank you.
I was, David, I was concerned about the 11th and Q intersection getting a three-way stop or four-way, I can't remember what you'd put there, but so that would stop 11th Street's traffic to let this additional traffic come through and get on 11th. So the, the 11th and Q to me is already impacted, and this project is going to impact it more, and I just wanted to, stop sign discussion to come up.
Currently, yes, we did, we did discuss that. And currently the volume on 11th and Q, it will not meet the warrant for the stop sign. But as we are working on new stop control policy for the City of Arqueta, which we'll be bringing you, to you in a month or two, which will allow us to have some different standards than the MUTCD, which stands for manual for uniform traffic control devices. That's the standard used by the whole state of California. So if we go follow that standard, we will not be able to meet the standard for three-way or four-way stop at Q and 11th. But with our new standards, which we are working at the TSC, we might be able to, because of, it, it's a point system, so if it's near a school, we might be able to put a stop, two-way or a four-way stop, so.
How about the use of mass transit on that Q and 11th?
Yes, I think that also has a...
Also, no?
That will help us to put a stop sign also on the new point system, on the stop control policy.
Okay, so I'm trusting that we're gonna, that's gonna happen, no? I mean, we're gonna talk about it.
Yes, well, I cannot, yes.
TSC gives us a direction.
Definitely. I cannot guarantee that that will happen, but I believe we will follow the steps and we will go through and we will be able to do that in future if it meets the warrant.
So the, the traffic control on Foster, at those intersections, we're going to have Q Street getting a stop sign?
That is correct.
And then what's happening on Janes for those two, the two entrances or egress?
So both the entrance, both the entrance from the project to the Foster will have a stop sign.
Going on to Foster?
Going on to Foster, yes.
And how about Janes and Foster?
Right now, I would say on Janes, there's a stop sign, not on Foster.
And is there any intention to put one on Foster at Janes?
Currently, again, the, based on the volume of traffic currently, and even after with this full development of this project, it may not warrant. But again, that's proximity to the school and church, so that might help with our new stop control policy.
Good, thank you.
Well, say, I think it looks good. Thank you so much, and, and thank you for proposing a project that's, you know, so digestible to us. I mean, we have very small things to refine it with, but really it's addressing the needs in the city. It's thoughtful in its layout. It's thoughtful in its respect for the nature around it and the farm next to it. And I, I talked with our community development director about the organic thing, and I get that because I've run organic and not organic certified farms anyway. And I, I understand that as an issue, but, you know, tying that into a lease, just saying that people will use the practices as, you know, designed by USDA. Yeah, I think, I, I think that this is a project, I think, I can't speak for everybody, but I think we pretty much are all on board with this and are feeling pretty happy about it. So, thank you.
Any other comments, council?
Yeah, I, yeah, I'll just echo. I'm, I'm supportive of this project. I think a question for me still is around with, with this connection through, you know, Foster, Foster East to Foster West and the concerns for Wisteria and Heather Lane. At what point can we, we get some proposed traffic calming or potential stop signs, like what that would look like for that part to make sure that we aren't having folks that are going down Foster really fast as they're going towards Alliance and then going by streets that are, that have been historically pretty used to very little traffic?
So currently, we do not have a detailed design how that would work. Right now, on Heather Lane, I believe there is a stop control, the stop sign to Foster. However, there's no stop sign on Wisteria. Potentially, once we connect to Foster, it will warrant to put a stop sign, at least on Wisteria, as coming to Foster.
Is, is there any consideration for a four-way stop at Q and Foster?
Currently, based on... Yeah, we do not meet the criteria currently. But in future, when there's a full traffic, full development of the project, potentially it might meet the criteria. But currently, the way it stands from the project and the existing traffic volume, it will not meet the warrant for the stop control.
So something I, I would like to see if it's, because I totally agree about using a criteria to be, to be consistent. So I, I definitely don't want to debate that. But I just want to make sure that, that as we're building out that road, if there are structural improvements we can make to make traffic be calmer, going, as they're transitioning by Wisteria and Heather to eventually a stop at Alliance, I, I just want to make sure that we're, we're planning for that now. If, if a stop sign may not be warranted, that we still have some sort of traffic calming for, for going into that part of the neighborhood.
I do think that's part of the plan. Right now, Foster on that portion is, you know, built pretty wide, and there's going to be bike lanes added. If we follow our travel demand policy and our road diet policy, we'll end up with something slimmer. We've been telling the community the whole time that as we get closer to build-out design for Foster, that we will have traffic calming elements included. I also wanted to point out to the council, because this was a discussion last time about there being two for Foster, that we will have traffic calming elements included. I also wanted to point out to the council, because this was a discussion last time about there being two exits for the project site, the new housing development of Creekside. Right now, Wisteria, that Westwood Manor neighborhood, it houses about three times the number of homes, and it has only one way in, one way out. And so the Foster extension will actually provide a secondary egress for that subdivision. So both those things kind of will play into ultimately the design of, of that road.
Yeah, speeding is a concern on Foster Avenue, and that was brought up at our TSC meeting as well. So when we move through the design, as you can see in one of the layout, when the Foster, old Foster connects to new Foster, or the east Foster connects to west Foster, there's a chican, so that will help to reduce the speed as well. So it's, right now, it's drastic, but it could be designed in a, in a fashion that it will help in traffic calming.
I'd like to give the public opportunity to talk on this item. And proponent, you want to go ahead first?
Thank you. Chris Start, agent for Foster Avenue LLC. Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to acknowledge that I think, you know, we took down notes from the last meeting, and I, I believe staff has done a good job addressing all the issues. I think pretty much everything David's gone over, we agree with. I'm not opposing anything that, that has been brought up. And I think the project, I appreciate the feedback and the deliberations, and I think the project's better for it. And I just want to acknowledge that staff's worked hard. We've, we've worked hard, it's been a long haul, and we're hoping that you would approve the project. I understand we're not doing it tonight, but we're, we're hoping you vote yes, and I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
As opposed to this particular ordinance, this is the area where you guys' lack of police response and lack of emergency response caused the death of a student. So I'm wondering if you guys, in your planning at all, had somehow factored that in to basically somehow improving your emergency response from approximately this area to the hospital, making it so 14 minutes isn't the average time that someone is, gets before they get to the hospital and receive emergency response and all that. And, yeah, I just want to make sure that was somehow factored in because you guys have failed on that, and you're talking about traffic and all these other things, but I think safety is something you obviously need help with. So, thank you.
As a Plaza Point, I'd like to say this evening, amazed, as I put on my civil engineering hat, how adept our engineering staff is at doing a multiplicity of things that bring a project together in such a manner, it's wonderful what you've done. But as I look at the project, one long-term thing to consider is how many gallons of water a year does this project take? And how are we looking at long-term planning for the sewer and water and the increased water consumption for the long-term with this project? So these two things coming together, enough water to support this project far into the future and all the other development that we're going to do, it needs to run in tandem. And that's why we have the expertise we have as engineering staff. It's just wonderful. The other thing is a public safety concern. As you develop the trails, increased traffic patrols also, we're going to have to have a bicycle cop. I had maybe a whole bicycle cop crew that works to facilitate safety along the new corridors that we're developing. So the public safety concern and the water concerns for the future.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So this area is going to be affected by sea level rise the most of the entire California coast, and that's because of plate tectonics. We're, we're sinking and sea level rise is going up. A family buying this house might not be able to pass it on to their children because by 2100, we're going to see three meters of sea level rise, and that's due to increase because the numbers are only getting worse. And Alderon, I think you guys might be familiar with him. He used to be on the planning commission. It's so funny because last time I was here, I saw this, and I was like, why are we building the bottoms? And then I went to go see his presentation serendipitously, and all the information is out there for you guys to analyze, and this is not a good spot for this. I have a map, which I will email to you, but it shows here that the Foster Avenue subdivision area with the 20-foot contour and inundation area, it looks like the subdivision is above the 20-foot contour and outside of sea level rise. But you can see that the area does come up, that the inundation area does come up to Janes Creek, which would lead to backwater flooding of the subdivision area when storm water runoff and high tide. So they're going to be able to see the shoreline from their patio in 2100, and I don't see how this is sustainable. Yeah, we have 75% of our shoreline, wait, 75% of our shoreline is artificial, and there is no shoreline management in effect right now, which means that if one of the dikes gives in right now, we'll already see two feet of water that won't go away because we're lower than sea level rise. And, yeah. Just, I'm going to send you Alderon's information, and I really hope you guys reach out to him and discuss this. Thanks.
Thanks.
Anyone else that wanted to speak on this Creekside subdivision item? Okay, not, nobody else wanted to talk? You need direction from us?
Well, you know, could you address the sea level rise concern?
Absolutely. So sea level rise was addressed in the EIR, in the draft EIR originally, and then there was a public comment on sea level rise, asking, you know, what, you know, what the impacts of sea level rise on the project would be long-term. And staff responded in the final EIR using the NOAA web mapper as a point of reference for what sea level rise of 10 feet, which is slightly above projections within the, you know, next 50 years, would look like, and it doesn't even get close to the project know, next 50 years, would look like, and it doesn't even get close to the project site. Just for a point of reference, as the commenter mentioned, the contours are around the 20-foot elevation mark for the project site. Currently, high tides reach to, you know, about eight and a half feet would be an extremely high tide during a king tide. And so there's basically 12 feet of free board, just looking at the, you know, the elevation, independent of any obstacles that are, you know, that would be impeding that sea level rise from reaching the project site. Obviously, there are a lot of other assets within the city of Arcata that are below that 20-foot threshold as well. And currently, the city's planning on, you know, a moderated retreat strategy that allows for the developments that are within those potential inundation zones to, you know, continue to maintain for as long as it's feasible to, you know, continue to protect those, and then to start removing those assets. And so the South G Street corridor is really the most exposed, sort of the fallback line that we've discussed in our study sessions to this point. Look at Samoa as sort of the next fallback. Now, obviously, sea level rise projections range everywhere from, you know, a couple of meters to tens of meters, and those are completely different planning scenarios. But at this point, there is nothing to suggest that this project would be impacted by sea level rise within the next, you know, several decades.
David, there's a comment about sufficient water and sewer for the project, and also is emergency response going to be improved or, you know, hindered by the project?
Mm-hmm.
You know, so I'm thinking about roundabout at Foster and Alliance, might be considered an improvement?
You know, certainly for access and traffic flow, the extension of Foster and the, you know, the improvements that will make it, you know, the traffic flow better are slight improvements. Obviously, if you've got a siren, everyone's pulling over and getting out of your way. In terms of public safety, the evaluation that we did was through referrals early on to police, fire, other service providers for those emergency services. And the, you know, the threshold that they're using for evaluating the impact to their services for CEQA purposes essentially boils down to, is a new fire station or police station a substation required to serve the project? That would be considered an environmental impact. And the referral comments, what we're trying to get at is, you know, is there, you know, an impact to the level of service that would be, you know, that would, you know, be a strain on your organization? Fire and police have, you know, responded that they could contain, could handle the increase in call for services from this project, you know, based on their current projections, current staffing. And then the fiscal analysis also evaluated the impact on those services due to additional property and sales taxes. And it's revenue neutral, slightly revenue positive if the assumptions of the fiscal analysis are correct. So I can't tell you in any given circumstance whether the response times would be adequate to, you know, to save a life in that particular situation, but the general responses that we got from those public safety entities was that they could handle the new project with their current and planned services.
I'm going to assume that water and sewer that we have is adequate to absorb this project?
It is. That's a two-part question, and Mark may have something to say to this too, but it is. Certainly, this project was envisioned in general plan 2020 EIR. It was included as one of the expansion parcels in the analysis for planning for the wastewater treatment plant for the water system. In practice, the project will have hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of connection fees. In addition, there's a condition of approval that the project contribute $160,000 towards the new tank that'll serve Zone One to provide additional water infrastructure and capacity, not only for the project, but it's, you know, for the entire Zone One. So it's paying a share of that. And then in addition, there's a wastewater impact fee that's associated with the, you know, conditions and development agreement that will provide, I don't have the dollar figure on the top of my head right now, but tens of thousands of dollars to planning efforts to ensure that future build-out, future growth in the city of Arcata can be accommodated through our wastewater treatment plans. And so it's contributing both directly through connections for water and wastewater, as well as through additional fees that are being assessed since it's an act station into the city of Arcata.
So at this point, we just, we're supposed to provide you with direction and then continue the hearing to a certain, date certain? But I don't know what that date certain would be.
February 5th.
February 5th.
Yeah, if you have additional questions, we'd be happy to research those between now and then. Otherwise, we'll be busily putting together the final versions of the approval documents and bringing those to a continued meeting February 5.
So at this point, I'm going to continue the public hearing to February 5?
By motion, yeah, take a vote.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to continue this public hearing to February 5.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we can, Michael can come back in?
We're going to resume the city council meeting. Next is new business having to do with termination of service and conditions for residential water service. Could I have a staff report, please?
Yeah, this would be implementing the water shut-off policy that the city adopted in December. It's a policy adopted for discontinuation of water service for residential customers due to non-payment. And the city's policy in turn was implementing state law. State law has an implementation date of February 1. So this ordinance essentially updates the municipal code. I won't go into any greater depth unless you have questions. But I do want to point out that this ordinance is asking the council, as it's proposed, you don't have to do anything different, is asking the council to make findings so that it can go into effect immediately upon adoption. And those findings are located under Section 5 of the proposed ordinance at the old packet page of 264. And these findings are actually based on the state legislature's findings when the state adopted the water shut-off protection law. And it's basically saying that all Californians have a right to access water that is clean and affordable, and residential shut-offs have a disproportionately negative impact on certain classifications and types of individuals, specifically infants, children, elderly, low-income families, communities of color, people for whom English is a second language, physically disabled persons, and persons with life-threatening medical conditions. So if you introduce this tonight, you don't need to make those findings separately because they're embedded in what you would be taking action on. We would be bringing it back for adoption at the next meeting on the consent calendar. And these findings do require a four-fifths council to enact. If you have any specific questions about the discontinuation policy, the finance director is here who drafted the policy for the city.
Can I clarify something you just said? You said first, if we introduced it tonight, then you'd like to say it, or you'd like it to be immediately?
It would be, become effective immediate upon adoption. So it still has one more reading, but then it'll go into effect presumably on February 5. And the state legislature had a rollout of February 1, so.
Okay.
Thanks.
Last member prayer?
I'll be ready to make a motion, but I'll wait until after a public comment.
So I'm going to open this to public comment. So any member of the public who would like to comment on this item, please come forward.
I just want to speak in favor of that policy. It does disproportionately affect people of color, disabled peoples, peoples with families, working-class people. I've had my water shut off on me, and not only is it shut off and I don't have access to water, but I'm also, there's a fee of like $50 to $100 that is also added on to the payment. And it's just disgusting. So hopefully you pass the policy.
Thank you. Would any other member of the public like to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council.
Okay. I will make a motion to introduce ordinance number 1526, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Arcata, amending the Arcata Municipal Code Title VII, Public Works, Chapter Three, Water, Article Nine, Discontinuance of Service, waive reading of the text and consent to read by title only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Next is new business item B, small cell 5G wireless facilities. Can I have a staff report, please?
So this is, this, I'm going to have a very brief staff report orally, because there's quite a lot in your written materials. But I want to point out that this is a first step in implementing a council priority project to adopt ordinances to accommodate 5G technology, including updating the land use code to set out a regulation framework, adopting a fee schedule for city street poles and facilities, consider removing exclusions for three-feet-or-less antennas, and consulting with HSU. The reason it's coming to you now is to get additional direction, because there are recent developments from the Federal Communications Commission that have made the deployment of small cell wireless facilities much easier with the result that regulation by the city is much more difficult, it's much more preempted than it was previously. I can go into all of that, but the important distinction that has been eliminated by a new order is a distinction that was initially in state law, and it had been previously always interpreted to be existing in federal law. And it distinguished between private, I'm sorry, publicly-owned properties for right-of-way purposes versus publicly-owned properties for non-right-of-way purposes. So for example, the streetlight poles, utility poles, that kind of thing, and/or city buildings and other types of city-owned properties that are not in the right-of-way. Previously, that distinction allowed cities to treat the two differently in regulating wireless communication facilities. And what the previous law was that on the public right-of-ways, the city could not charge revenue-raising fees, it could not impose franchise fees, it could only charge minimal-cost recovery. But as to the non-right-of-way properties, the city could actually charge market rate for access to these properties. That's been eliminated. The city cannot charge market rate, and it cannot really limit access any longer to a newly-defined category of wireless telecommunications facilities that are called the small cell. The small cell, which is part of the fifth-generation or 5G technology rollout, is smaller antenna that are, you know, about 15 inches high. They do have ground support vaults that can get up to four to six feet, maybe larger. And they are spaced relatively closely together. Under the new federal order, these are now also almost exclusively principally permitted anywhere on publicly-owned property. So the initial, I think, incentive behind this priority project was for the city to come in and develop at least a regulatory infrastructure to accommodate this build-out as it comes. And so the policy questions that we need direction from you about before we can proceed any further have to do with how far you want us to go with this. The small, that's number one. And this is because the small cell order that has come from the FCC is under litigation. And it is by numerous different states and other entities. And it's, all of the litigation's been consolidated in the Ninth Circuit, so, you know, I suppose that's useful for us. But nonetheless, we don't know what the landscape looks like, whether it's going to remain, you know, with such a blanket sort of preemption or not. We can, under the, under the current order, we can We can, under the current order, we can proceed to implement a ministerial program, kind of like a building permit. And so the wireless, small cell wireless operator could come in and apply for the building permit. And under the federal order, the fees are capped, so we can't charge, we can't do a cost analysis and charge what may be actual cost recovery unless we want to go through some evidentiary hoops. But so then the fees would be capped. But we can adopt that program, and there are examples in your handout packet of communities that have done that kind of thing. Together with that would be the need to update the land use code because the land use code presently doesn't distinguish between the small cell units versus the larger wireless. It does now, the land use code does provide exemptions for its requirements. Use permits are required for any wireless facility under the land use code, with an exception for small antennas that are a meter, you know, less than 40 inches or smaller. And those antennas also have to be for specific purposes. The order from the FCC actually defines the small cell facility to be quite a bit larger than that, and it doesn't use that same metric for defining what the small cell facility is. So we haven't done an in-depth analysis of the land use code to determine what type of revision is appropriate, what is right now, what is allowable under the federal order. And so that's question number two. Do you want us to proceed with that? And then question number three is whether the council wants the city staff to look into a dig-once policy and bring that forward. And dig-once is the terminology that is given to this concept that these wireless facilities are supported by a hardwired fiber optic cable. And that cable takes up space in the city's right-of-way. Usually, it's underground. And the question is whether the city, in the course of embracing the 5G rollout, the city wants to acknowledge that there will have to be additional fiber optic rollout, broadband rollout to support that. Does it want to incorporate it into a single trenching kind of ordinance so that once it's installed, all other utilities have to go in that same conduit? There are a couple of different mechanisms for rolling out a dig-once, and you have an example in your packets. So I have some other policy documents in your packet, one from the National League of California Cities, one from a technical research arm of the Federal Highway Administration. And that, unless you have any questions, is basically my staff report.
Ms. Patina, would you like to start? Any questions?
Are we, if, let's just say the council wanted to ban 5G in the city period, can we do that?
No.
Okay.
That is not allowed. You can't ban it at all.
And so we are basically in a position where if somebody comes in and they want to do it, we don't have the option to tell them no.
Correct.
And, but we also have nothing on the books.
Correct.
As far as charging fees.
Correct. Yep. And I think that was probably the primary motivation behind getting something on the books.
I have just a question about the technology, and I don't know, maybe someone can answer this.
Yeah.
Yeah. So let's say that's the small cell thing with the antenna on it. And then we're thinking about dig-once policy of putting fiber optics in, or at least having a conduit so we could put fiber optics in. So how do they go together? Like, is every one of these hooked up to a fiber optic? If we have good fiber optics here, can we have less of these?
Do you?
This is a question that goes through my mind, and I know, I understand, you may not be able to answer that.
Right.
Maybe someone here could, or anyway.
Well, what happens is because of the very high-frequency short wavelength that's being used, that these travel very short distances. And so the idea is to have additional bandwidth so that people can get higher speed or larger numbers of cellular customers.
I understand that. I think what you're, I think what you're saying, it's like, let's say this is a small cell technology, another 300 feet, we have another one because they have shorter waves. But is more fiber optic options underneath the ground, is that helpful to not need so many of these?
I don't know whether the fiber, the fiber cable for this particular service could be shared with other services. Is that the question you're asking?
No, I, my understanding is that the small cell bandwidth provides much faster speed, wireless speed, or internet speed. Any connectivity is just much faster than broadband could ever be. Do you know otherwise?
No. And I was just, I mean, I think what I hear you're saying is that it's, that would be wired in to the fiber optics.
That's, I think it is, and that's my question, actually.
Are you asking whether it's shared or whether it's dedicated to the 5G service?
What I'm asking is if we did a very robust dig-once policy, and we had a lot of conduit, and every time we ripped up the road, and we were ready for a lot of fiber cable, could that reduce our need for these?
And I think I understand your question, and my understanding is that the reason people like 5G is because when you are able to take advantage of it, it's much faster than the fiber optic would be. So if we have fewer cells, you don't have as many people that are able to take advantage of it. Now, and there's another question, which I don't know the answer to, is for any of them to be working, you know, how, what sort of proximity do they have to be in? So, you know, we obviously need to learn more about that.
Last member prayer?
I think we do need to have a framework to work with because, yeah, if we're silent on it, then, right, with preemption, that means we just go with what's already on the books. And if we don't have a fee on the books, then we, there's nothing for this impact that's happening. I think obviously it would be interesting to know what's going to happen with litigation. But I think having a framework in the meantime, I think, would be helpful so we're not just hoping that it works out in our favor, because I guess I just don't really trust the way the federal courts are working based on appointments that are happening. So, so, yeah, I think having a framework would be valuable.
Some members of the public are contending that this very short wavelength has negative health impacts and are asking that we restrict this technology to the great extent that we legally can.
Right. So the, unfortunately, the new order doesn't allow regulations based specifically on health impacts that are any different than the orders they've already have implemented around radio frequency, health, and distances from these antennas. So we are preempted. We can't, we can't make the distances any greater, we can't require that they be further away from buildings.
Oh, yeah. I was gonna say, just kind of about the question earlier, if it was wired or not. My understanding is, I mean, for the most part, they just need power and that they're connecting to a bigger antenna. And so they're all, you know, it's like this microgrid or local grid. And, you know, and I guess that was always my concern, is our city is just littered with these antennas because they have to be 100 feet, 300 feet apart. Even in a small city, they would just be absolutely everywhere.
That's probably part of the lawsuit, I imagine, because I've heard other cities frustrated with that, just that they're, that they could be put everywhere.
Isn't it true that they still have to have a permit, building permit, to put one in?
Right.
I mean, they're principally permitted anywhere, but you have to have a building permit.
Right. That would be, that would be the land use code revision we would need. And then the building permit would get adopted, you know, sort of through the municipal code as a ministerial permit. Now, there was one successful challenge so far, only at the trial court district level, district court level, and it, one of the challenges to these, the suite of new orders that have been adopted. And it said that the order was too broad in that it preempted the National Historic Preservation Act. So to the extent there's a historic structure that is being cited for placement of one of these structures, one court has at least ruled that you have to consider that. So, you know, little inroads have been made, and, you know, that's just at the trial court level, and it may be appealed, and then we don't know what'll happen.
You know, I certainly support us figuring out how to apply the building permit and the fees.
Okay.
I mean, that just.
So in discussing this with city manager Dever, that she said that there are, I think you also said that there are two types of city property, city-owned right-of-way and city facilities, other than right-of-way.
Right.
And that Ms. Dever said that it would be legal for the city to not allow 5G facilities on, or 5G equipment in city, like City Hall or the ballpark or something like that, but the city could not restrict those on right-of-way.
Not completely. There are, in the order, there are some, the Federal Communications Commission order, there is still authority that is given to the local cities to regulate on reasonable aesthetic and grounds, and only if there is a technological, technologically feasible alternative. So the difference between right-of-way publicly-owned property and non-right-of-way publicly-owned property has actually been eliminated, and it's all been rolled into the treatment that was given to the right-of-way property. So the city only has the ability to regulate now for technologically feasible aesthetics and, you know, a couple of other kinds of things, cannot adopt a complete ban, cannot discriminate, cannot, you know, among the different carriers that want to come into the area. So, you know, one question, and maybe we are a little behind the timing on this, is whether the city wants to look at a, sort of a planning effort around wireless connectivity in the city. You know, some cities, after some very exhaustive planning, decided they wanted to become very connected with very fast wireless capabilities. And so they, you know, they were able to implement the rollout based on a plan that had a lot of community engagement. I don't know if any of you, you know, are interested in doing that. And the other component is, you know, the dig-once policy and whether we deal with that later or not. And I will say that Connie Stewart with the, what is it, the Center for Rural Studies Policy?
Policy, yeah.
I'm sorry?
California Center for Rural Policy.
California Center for Rural Policy has a lot of information on dig-once and the fiber optic broadband, so.
Any other, I want to open this up for public comments, but first, are there any further comments from members of council?
Well, just because we're talking about dig-once, I am in support of that. I like that idea. I think that makes sense. So, and there is a part of me would like to see us do as much planning for fiber optics or fiber cable, whatever we call it, as much as possible, because to me, that's preferable. And, you know, potentially, because that's, you know, safe this region with that, so we don't feel we need, or they don't see a market here because we all have vast enough. And I think this is also just something kind of interesting. I mean, I don't imagine the rules came from the feds because of our impatience, but to some degree, this is what we get as humans when we're impatient. We get 5G everywhere, you know? So we have to kind of think that through, too. Anyway.
Yeah, I mean, I just feel like we should, you know, amend the land use code and create fee structures to the furthest extent we can. I mean, could we, like, I remember, like, the city of San Jose, they, I think they were charged, it was like $700 in installation or something like that. And let's just say, for example, we did that, but the FCC set it at 250. Can we just leave it at 700, but then only charge 250? So if the rules go away later, we already have 700 on the books.
So the fees that are in the federal order are called presumptively reasonable, yeah, it's a safe harbor. If we wanted to go higher, we would have to do formal cost study analyses, and then the burden shifts to the city. So if we are within the safe harbor and we get challenged, the burden is on the company challenging to make a claim that the fees are unreasonable. If we go the other direction and we want to go above it, we have to establish that the fees are actual cost recovery. We could, we could adopt higher, but only based on cost recovery analysis.
Anything else from council? All right. So I'm going to open this up to public comments. So if any member of the public would like to come forward on this item, please do so.
So this is really, really important, and I hope that the five of you can acknowledge it. Oh, can we start me at three minutes instead of 2:40?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry about that.
My mistake.
Okay. So firstly, fiber optics are no slower than 5G. They're actually just as fast. So please do some research on that one. Please acknowledge that Mill Valley, Mill Valley, California, where the telecom executives behind 5G, they've banned it from residential. Mill Valley, California successfully banned 5G from its neighborhoods, okay? So if they're not subject to it, neither should we. So I'd like to read, please, this speech, and I'll keep it under my time. My name is Matt Landman. I live at 1031 Sixth Street here in Arcata. I'm here to voice that I do not consent to the radiation exposures, levels associated with 5G. 5G infrastructure requires a cell tower every 500 feet. In Arcata, this is basically every three homes. So coin flip, possibly, your home may have a small cell right out front of it, about 20 feet from the bedroom window. And these small cell towers emit up to 1,000 times the radiation of current cell towers, 1,000 times the current radiation of current cell towers. So the cell towers that exist, would you like one 20 feet from your bedroom window that emits 1,000 times more radiation than, think about that, please. So the 5G technology, it has not been proven safe. It has effectively been studied as a weapon and been proven effective as that, but 5G technology has not been proven safe. These new 5G towers will again emit upwards to 1,000 times more radiation than current towers. And there's so much, so many studies showing that being next to cellphone towers causes harm. The 1-millimeter-sized carrier wave used in 5G tech is also used at airports, in body scanners, where people have the right to opt out. And worth noting, many countries have removed these body scanners from airports due to health concerns. Living in a 5G environment will be like spending 24 hours a day in an airport security body scanner. Please consider creating an independent, unbiased research committee to assess proximity and cumulative exposure health implications of evolving 5G tech, while especially consider children and pregnant women. I've seen many studies that show, that insist that children conceived, born, and raised in a 5G environment will not be able to reproduce. This is really heavy information. The city of Arcata is not capable of making an informed ruling on complex 5G infrastructure deployment without adequate research. No offense, you're just not experts in this field. Experts do exist, however. Topics such as radio frequency, non-ionizing radiation, terpene levels in trees, terpene levels.
Could you wrap up your comments, please?
So, yeah, there's a lot of research, but especially, and I'll send all this to you. Terpene levels in plants are impacted by cell towers, okay, which cause fire dangers. Having a small cell near any vegetation will cause fire dangers. That alone should be something to think about. Please just push this as long as you can, don't make decisions, wait, use the precautionary principle. Thank you so much for having a heart in this issue.
Thank you.
So I support all of what, as Matt just said. I've met with Matt months and months ago as we tried to talk about, you know, what the plan would be when 5G started to try and roll out in this community. And I was hoping that we would have a little And I was hoping that we would have a little bit more time before it came, but here it is. So, we don't know how this impacts people. What we know is that it literally was created as a weapon by the military. That's what it was created for. It wasn't created for communication, it wasn't created for accessing media quicker. It's not about that. And so, I mean, I can go into my theories about what it is that I think it's for, but that's irrelevant to what it is that the impact is going to be on our actual health. I personally will probably have to move to somewhere that doesn't have it. I can't even stay in a house that has a smart meter. I have to block out every single crack in my, I have to block out all of my windows in my room, because there is an LED streetlight across the street from my house, and I cannot sleep if that's there. Like, these frequencies are really, really strong, and all the research that's coming out so far shows how much damage that it does, and we don't really know anything yet. And so, I can tell, I know some of you all, and I know that you're not necessarily down for 5G, which is great, but like, we're going to have to pull out all of the stops to stop this from coming here, because that corporation has a really, really stronghold, especially on our federal government. And so, they're the ones who have made it really difficult for us to say no to something that is harmful to us. So, like Matt said, pull out all of the stops to slow this indefinitely. Create a specific group that is focused on doing research about this. Utilize money to hire specific, like, people who understand this topic, understand how it impacts health. It is worth us putting resources and time and energy into stalling this, because this is detrimental. So, I really hope that you all take it as your personal responsibility to really understand all the impacts of this before doing anything that could be, make it, that would make it easier to come here. Thanks.
Thank you.
I mainly have a question of clarification. Have you all talked to the indigenous peoples of this land and what their thoughts are on this project? And if not, I want to remind you all that consultation, if you do decide to do this moving forward, consultation does not equal consent. The United States has signed on to the United Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, and so you all should also remember that. Consultation does not equal consent. So, as you move forward with this project and you do do the research that is necessary, you must also remember that not only on your own, not only have this on your own mind about the seven generations ahead and how we should be thinking of not only the impact that this might have on our bodies, but on the water, on the land, on the non-human life that exists around us, but also, please, please, please include the indigenous peoples of this land in this conversation and follow their lead.
Thank you.
My name's Joanne McGary, and I cannot agree more with all the speakers ahead on all the issues. This is a real political federal FCC decision. It's very political, and we should do everything as a forward-thinking community in the vanguard of opposing this type of Big Brother behavior on our community. The precautionary principles that the EU incorporates should really be considered. We should join with other communities like Mill Valley and others in really, really, not only stalling this, but exposing what is being thrust in our modern societies, just for speed and convenience and profit and greed. And I think that this 5G thing is symbolic, symbolic of what is wrong with our society. And I think that we just passed an ordinance regarding plastic pollution, and this is a deeper, heavier, more detrimental pollution, and it's invisible. And I think we really need to not let this happen in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I know a lot of, a few countries have banned 5G or actually wireless altogether in their schools, in their nurseries, and I propose that this permit ban this cell tower anywhere close to children, even in residences. And that might be, I'm throwing this up, this is pie in the sky here, but we need to keep this out of our community. I know that I will not have my kids here if this is here, and I know that individual routers are already very powerful, but this is every 20 seconds, we're going to get blasted with this. And it's criminal what's happening, and we have to. I wish we had done a moratorium on this before this came. Possibly, we could have avoided this, I'm not sure. No. So, good luck. We need it, because this is awful. Thanks.
Thank you. If any other member of the public would like to speak on this, please come forward.
Oz of Plaza Point, Arcata. As we look at this issue, it's true that Arcata needs a communications corridor. We're alongside 101, and there's a communication strategy that we could adopt as a community, but not this. What I'm hearing tonight gives me a flashback of 1976 aboard a U.S. military vessel out at sea, hearing the call, "Do not rotate or radiate any electronic equipment. Men are working aloft." Now, when that equipment was rotated and radiated, I saw seagulls drop out of the area above the ship, fully cooked on the flight deck. I mean, you could get a knife and fork and eat some bird. What we're doing is using military communications arrays on the ground all over. I can't believe that we don't have the foresight to understand health effects before we jump headlong into catastrophe, whether it's with oil pollution in our oceans and plastic, or whether it's microwave. I live in a Plaza Point, smart meters everywhere. I live in a Wi-Fi fog. I guess I'll just do a little blog. But think of the children and the grandchildren and all of the things that we don't know yet, and consider what we can do proactively to get faster communications with health and safety in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. So, if any other member of the public would like to come in on this item, please come forward.
Can I say one more sentence?
No, just one chance. You can give material to City Manager or send to our individual council members. All right, so I will take it back to council?
Yeah, Michael, oh, go ahead.
Well, yeah, I just, I looked up Mill Valley's ban on 5G, just to see what it says, and it says, "Mill Valley's ordinance is designed to frustrate these efforts," which they're talking about, the FCC efforts to make it so that you can't, you know, resist these things, "while remaining within the letter of the federal law, which preempts local ordinances." So, I don't know, maybe, I don't know if you know anything about that, or, I mean, I'll be doing some research into what that means. I just thought I'd point it out.
All right. I just wanted to support us understanding what Mill Valley did before we go any further on this, and get some clarification on the dig-ones thing. Does that apply to 5G, or does it apply to fiber optic, or does it apply to both of them?
I think it's mostly about fiber optic, fiber cable.
I'm assuming that, but I don't know that we're not running fiber to the 5G thing?
Well, that's what my question was earlier. I was trying to correlate between the two.
Yeah, I guess I don't really understand where that 5G thingy gets its data from. So, if it's getting it...
Cellular.
Okay. So, we're looking at, if we need speed, we can do fiber optic in place of 5G?
I think so, but then I'm certainly not an expert in this.
My understanding is that it's mobile cellular technology, and that if somebody has wired internet, they wouldn't be going through 5G. It's just if you're, if you're mobile, then you would go through that or other cellular technology.
Yeah, and so that's why I would like to have, kind of as a plan, that we do the dig-ones, or we get that conduit in there, so we can have as much fiber cable as possible to potentially either ban or reduce our dependence.
Well, if we could ban 5G like Mill Valley did, then we don't have to search too far.
Well, I think one important point for the city attorney, to the extent that court cases have been tried and federal law has been clarified, is what power does the city have to regulate this technology?
Right. So, apart from the fact that the current orders are in litigation right now, and these are orders that were adopted in 2018, we know if we take those on face value, that our ability to regulate is very minimal. We will look at the Mill Valley ordinance to see what they did, and, you know, it's obviously maybe something to bring forward to consider, but we don't have a lot of options. Like I said, they have to be, the aesthetic options have to be technically feasible, technologically feasible. You know, for example, to the extent that if undergrounding is demanded for all wireless infrastructure, it has to be technologically feasible to underground, and, you know, that may not, there may be an argument that it's not.
And you said specifically in federal law that it is not allowed to restrict this on the basis of health impacts?
Right. Other than what they have already established by regulation based on their electromagnetic frequency regulations.
Right. And one thing I wanted to remind people of is what is called the supremacy clause of the U.S. Constitution, which is that if there is a federal law on something, that that would, that preempts state or local laws on it. And, I mean, anything could be challenged before the courts, but that is what applies constitutionally.
So, you know, it sounds like there's interest in researching the Mill Valley ordinance. You know, I just know, I moved this on goals last year, and it's, I mean, ever since then, it's just rolling out all over the country. So, I just, I really don't want to go too long before we talk about this more. You know, yeah, so if at the next council meeting, if there was more information, even if we're just getting an update, you know, more information?
So, I mean, I'm not inclined to focus on any action or direction, I mean, direction for research, but not beyond that, and not to act or adopt this at this time. But I think one, Mr. Landon, when I met with him earlier this evening, said that one thing that he's thinking of, I guess other people in the community are thinking of, is a ballot measure. So, I think very, one very important thing would be if they go in that direction, to have a very clear idea of what the situation as far as federal law, so that they, if they manage to get a ballot measure passed, that it isn't going to be overturned by federal courts, or that they greatly reduce the probability of that happening. So, any more direction from council?
You know, we're not really, we're just learning about this right now. So, I mean, you mentioned the indigenous peoples', you know, proclamation. We passed it ourselves. I personally went out and presented it to them. And, you know, what I told them was, you know, our interest in working with them and communicating with them, and, you know, they can come to us anytime, and we will go to them when we're working on new things. So, I appreciate you mentioning it, and I think you're absolutely right. So, we will make sure that happens.
One other thing I'll add is I think, to your point, right, this is being deployed across the country, but we're not being, you know, knocked on wood, we're, you know, we're not being faced with, like, actual, like, a project coming through with mass effort throughout the county yet. So, I think the timing is ripe for us to get more of this information, but it's not like we are being confronted right now with actual proposals to execute or deploy these cell towers.
It would be possible to do that. To schedule, it would be possible to schedule a town hall to have a community discussion.
Maybe once, once we have some more data, I mean, you know, we'd like to have the Mill Valley ordinance and some more info, and then start some strategizing.
There'd be more opportunity for other members of the public or outside communities or indigenous communities to attend and give their opinion and share information with each other, so that we can take better-informed action or no action, as we choose.
Okay.
So, that is, that on this. Next is oral and written communication. This time is provided for people to address the council or submit written communications on matters not on the agenda. At the conclusion of all oral and written communications, the council may respond to statements. Any request that requires council action will be set by the council for future agenda or referred to staff. And let's see, looks like we have some time. So, I will allow three minutes for people to speak on any matter that is not on the agenda.
My name is David Lawson, and I will be attending Humboldt State University in the fall. I go to Rancho Verde High School, and I will be majoring in criminal justice to become a lawyer and probably enter politics. The word "man" has been thrown around quite often in today's society. You're not a man because of how strong you are. You're not a man because you're the best athlete in your school or have the flashiest clothes. Being a man of the 21st century is about the character of your heart. Being a man is so much more emotional than it is physical. To be a man, you have to stand up for what you believe in. You have to show love and compassion for others. It's a man who is honest and dependable. A man stands by his word. A man takes care of the people around him and not just himself. To be a man is to be responsible, is to feel shame at the sight of what seems to be an unmerited misery, is to take pride in the victories of our comrades, is to feel when setting a single stone that one is contributing to the building of the world. Being a man in the 21st century isn't about the quantity of one's life, but about the quality of how you treat others. Thank you. If you couldn't tell, those were David Josiah Lawson's words. He was murdered in April of 2017 after being pepper sprayed. It has been over 33 months, and nobody has been held accountable for a stabbing. Those of us standing for his justice come from all different backgrounds. We are not affiliated with any one political party. We simply want justice for David Josiah Lawson, his family, and our community. There was no reason for him to be taken away from us, and all we want is justice.
Thank you.
My name is David Lawson, and I will be attending Humboldt State University in the fall. I go to Rancho Verde High School, and I will be majoring in criminal justice to become a lawyer and probably enter politics. The word "man" has been thrown around quite often in today's society. You're not a man because of how strong you are. You're not a man because you're the best athlete in your school or have the flashiest clothes. Being a man of the 21st century is about the character of your heart. Being a man is so much more emotional than it is physical. To be a man, you have to stand up for what you believe in. You have to show love and compassion for others. It's a man who is honest and dependable. A man stands by his word. A man takes care of the people around him, his community, and not just himself. To be a man is to be responsible. It is to feel shame at the sight of what seems to be unmerited misery. It is to take pride in the victories of our comrades. It is to feel when setting a single stone that one is contributing to the building of the world. Being a man in the 21st century isn't about the quality of one's life, but about the quality of how you treat others. quality of how you treat others. Those were the words of David Josiah Lawson. He was murdered in April of 2017 after being pepper sprayed. It has been over 33 months, and nobody has been held accountable for his stabbing. Those of us standing for his justice come from all different backgrounds. We are not affiliated with one political party or social movement. We simply want justice for David Josiah Lawson, his family, and our community. There was no reason for him to be taken away from us. All we want is justice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I just want to acknowledge that we are on stolen Indigenous weat land, and I also want to echo these words of David Josiah Lawson, and I also want to acknowledge that there's like a increase in police presence tonight, and I feel like that's counterproductive to wanting to have community involvement and wanting to have people feel safe and represented here. I also want to hold Karen Deemer responsible for words that were said about how nobody was criminal, criminals at that party that night, because that just plays into the criminalizing of a black and brown party, because it was known that that party was hosted by black and brown bodies. So I just want to like put that mirror in front of you. And also, I want to just say that actually people, like, I don't believe in our criminal justice system. I don't think it delivers, like, justice, but Kyle Zolner is a criminal, does have prior violence, like, on his record of, like, attacking people with, like, like arms, so, like aggravated assault, and has been, like, has that. So I just wanted to, like, bring that up and make sure that we can, like, acknowledge those facts. And then, yeah, just really delivering this for you all. Good evening. My name is David Lawson, and I will be attending Humboldt State University in the fall. I go to Rancho Verde High School, and I will be majoring in criminal justice to become a lawyer and probably enter politics. The word "man" has been thrown around quite often in today's society. You're not a man because of how strong you are. You're not a man because you're the best athlete at your school or have the flashiest clothes. Being a man of the 21st century is about the character of your heart. Being a man is so much more emotional than it is physical. To be a man, you have to stand up for what you believe in. You have to show love and compassion for others. It is a man who is honest and dependable. A man stands by his word. A man takes care of the people around him and not just himself. To be a man is to be responsible, is to feel shame at the sight of what seems to be unmerited misery, it is to take pride in the victories of our comrades. It is to feel, it is to feel when setting a single stone that one is contributing to the building of the world. Being a man in the 21st century isn't about the quality of one's life, but about the quality of how you treat others. Thank you. If you couldn't tell, those were David Josiah Lawson's word, words. He was murdered in April of 2017 after being pepper sprayed. It has been over 33 months, and nobody has been held accountable for his stabbing. He'll heal more, but also, I just want to say that I'm proud of the words that I said last time, and that respectability has been something that I've brought to this. I've brought facts and figures. I've appealed to, like, all of the, like, proper ways and avenues of trying to see justice for this, and I think that anger is very valid here, and, and I, I think that I spoke properly for all that, and that people are still hurting, and this is still really relevant. So I just wanted to let you all know that, no matter what the media says of, like, Susan Ornellis even can recognize.
Could you wrap up your comments, please?
Totally. Can even recognize that the media will twist things, but as we just celebrated Martin Luther King Day, I think that direct action and saying "no more business as usual" is super valid. I'm still about it, so.
My name is David Lawson, and I will be attending Humboldt State University in the fall. I go to Rancho Verde High School, and I will be majoring in criminal justice to become a lawyer and probably enter politics. The word "man" has been thrown around quite often in today's society. You're not a man because of how strong you are. You're not a man because of your, because you're the best athlete in your school or have the flashiest clothes. Being a man of the 21st century is about the character of your heart. Being a man is so much more emotional than it is physical. To be a man, you have to stand up for what you believe in. You have to show love and compassion for others. It's a man who is honest and dependable. A man stands by his word. A man takes care of the people around him, not just himself. To be a man is to be responsible. It is to feel shame at the sight of what seems to be unmerited misery. It is to take pride in the victories of our comrades. It is to feel when setting a single stone that one is contributing to the building of the world. Being a man in the 21st century isn't about the quantity of one's life, but about the quality of how you treat others. Thank you. Those were David Josiah Lawson's words. He was murdered in April of 2017 after being pepper sprayed. It has been over 33 months, and nobody has been held accountable for his stabbing. Those of us standing for his justice come from all different backgrounds. We're not affiliated with any one political party. We simply want justice for David Josiah Lawson, for his family, his mother, and our community. There is no reason for him, there was no reason for him to be taken away from us. All we want is justice.
Thank you.
My name is, is David Lawson, and I will be attending Humboldt State University in the fall. I go to Rancho Verde High School, and I will be majoring in criminal justice to become a lawyer and probably enter politics. The word "man" has been thrown around quite often in today's society. You're not a man because of how strong you are. You're not a man because you're the best athlete in your school, or that you have the flashiest clothes. Being a man of the 21st century is about the character of your heart. Being a man is so much more emotional than it is physical. To be a man, you have to stand up for what you believe in. You have to show love and compassion for others. It's a man who is honest and dependable. A man who stands by his word. A man takes care of the people around him and not just himself. To be a man is to be responsible. It is to feel shame at the sight of what seems to be unmerited misery. It is to take pride in the victories of our comrades. It is to feel when setting a single stone that one is contributing to the building of the world. Being a man in the 21st century isn't about the quantity of one's life, but about the quality of how you treat others. Thank you. This is David Josiah Lawson's words. He was murdered April of eight, of 2017 after being pepper sprayed. It has been almost over 33 months, and nobody has held, been held accountable for this murder. Those of us standing for his justice come from all different backgrounds. We are not affiliated with any one political party. We just want justice. Justice for David Josiah Lawson, his family, and our community. There was no reason for him to be taken away from us. All we want is justice. And we're going to continue to show up and be here, and, and make you hear his words over and over again. And we're going to talk about him, and we're going to say his name, and we're going to demand that something changes. So whether that's you all coming out with your personal stories about what it is that you've been doing to work on this case, or you as a, you as a city coming out with a statement, however it is you want to go about it, you as a council are responsible, you as a city manager are responsible, and then you as individuals are responsible, because you're part of this community too. And so the safety impacts all of us. And so are you, you know, getting on your Facebook and asking people about it? Are you emailing people that you know that might have, uh, you know, any idea about ways that we could go about this? Like, are, are you talking to people? Are you putting pressure on the people that you know have the power to do something about this? And I know I've asked you how many times you've had a meeting with Maggie Fleming, and it's not enough. One or two is not enough. We come here every month. You should be meeting her at least every month.
Thank you.
My name is David Lawson, and I'll be attending Humboldt State University in the fall. I go to Rancho Verde High School, and I'll be majoring in criminal justice to be a lawyer and probably enter politics. The word "man" has been thrown around quite often in today's society. You're not a man because of how strong you are. You're not a man because you're the best athlete in your school or have the flashiest clothes. Being a man of the 21st century is about the character of your heart. Being a man is so much more emotional than it is physical. To be a man, you have to stand up for what you believe in. You have to show love and compassion for others. It is a man who is honest and dependable. A man stands by his words. A man takes care of the people around him and not just himself. To be a man is to be responsible. It is to feel shame at the sight of what seems to be unmerited misery. It is to take pride in the victories of our comrades. It is to feel when setting a single stone that one is contributing to the building of the world. Being a man in the 21st century isn't about the quality of one's life, but the, sorry, the quantity of one's life, but the quality of how you treat others. If you couldn't tell, those were David Josiah Lawson's words. He was murdered in April of 2017 after being pepper sprayed. It has been over 33 months, and nobody has been held accountable for his stabbing. Those of us standing for his justice come from all different backgrounds. We are not affiliated with any one political party. We simply just want justice for Josiah, for David Josiah Lawson, his family, and our community. There is no reason for him to be taken away from us. All we want is justice.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Lawson, and I will be attending Humboldt, Humboldt State University in the fall. I go to Rancho Verde High School, and I will be majoring in criminal justice to become a lawyer and probably enter politics. The word "man" has been thrown around quite often in today's society. You're not a man because of how strong you are. You're not a man because you're the best athlete in your school or have the flashiest clothes. Being a man of the 21st century is about the character of your heart. Being a man is so much more emotional than it is physical. To be a man, you have to stand up for what you believe in. You have to show love and compassion for others. It's a man who is honest and dependable. A man stands by his words. A man takes care of the people around him and not just himself. To be a man is to be responsible. It is to feel shame at the sight of what seems to be unmerited misery. It is to take pride in the victories of our comrades. It is to feel when setting a single stone that one is contributing to the building of the world. Being a man in the 21st century isn't about the quantity of one's life, but the quality of how you treat others. Thank you. If you couldn't tell, those were David Josiah's words. He was murdered in April of 2017 after being pepper sprayed. It has been over 33 months, and nobody has been held accountable for his stabbing. Those of us standing for his justice come from all different backgrounds. We are not affiliated with any one political party. We simply want justice for David Josiah Lawson, his family, and our community. There was no reason for him to be taken away from us. All we want is justice. And you will continue to hear those words. Justice, and it doesn't just stop with Zolner in jail. That also means community accountability. And that means how you all are responding to this. We will remember. Just know that. We will remember. And having six cops in here tonight does not make it any better. We will remember.
Thank you.
I think most people in this room are very well aware of the systemic flaw of this bureaucratic system we're all accountable to today. Where it can take life away from us. Eat it like the disgusting beast that it is. We all must play a role using the power that we hold as human beings alive with hearts and blood that flows through our veins to change this system and bring it back to something that we can be proud of as peoples here today. We can exchange words for months or years. We'll all express anger, I'm sure, but when we come here today to speak in regards to David Josiah Lawson, I want you to know that we will not forget how we have been treated as the people of your community in asking for justice, and asserting our rights as people, and demanding that we are safe in our communities. We're speaking for all of you. I hope you know, you know. Good evening. My name is David, David Josiah Lawson, and I will be attending Humboldt State University in the fall. I go to Rancho Verde High School, and I will be majoring in criminal justice to become a lawyer and probably enter politics. The word "man" has been thrown around quite often in today's society. You're not a man because of how strong you are. You're not a man because you're the best athlete in your school or have the flashiest clothes. Being a man of the 21st century is about the character of your heart. Being a man is so much more emotional than it is physical. To be a man, you have to stand up for what you believe in. You have to show love and compassion for others. It's a man who is honest and dependable. A man stands by his word. A man takes care of the people around him and not just himself. To be a man is to be responsible. It is to feel shame at the sight of what seems to be unmerited misery. It is to take pride in the victories of our comrades. It is to feel when setting a single stone that one is contributing to the building of the world. Let's build that better world. Set the stones. I think this is, this is applicable not just to men, but to all human beings that want to make this world a better place, and I know we all want to for our children. Justice for everybody in the future that might be held accountable for the crimes that are allowed here. The fester. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is, my name is Desai Maynard. I'm here to speak to you guys for way too many times I've been here. Seems like you guys have really got the process down, though. Locked the bottom door, have an overwhelming amount of cops for a public meeting. Sat down, looked and did the math. So I looked at your, the police officer's salary. You guys wasted approximately 550 taxpayer dollars having seven police officers at one point, standing around, two of them sitting, in a city with an unsolved murder, an unsolved arson, where someone got lit on fire two years ago, never really got solved. You guys really just don't see that you're wasting time, you're wasting energy. I recently just got back from a trip, and the biggest thing I could say about where I was is they respected life. They really respected life. You saw signs that were like 30 years old that said, "Five people died in a car crash here," and it was "up kept." And you guys are literally trying to disappear a murderer from three years ago. There's a murderer walking around, and you guys are just like, whatever. It's 14,000, there's 14,000 people here. That means one in 14,000 people is a murderer, and it's your job, Karen Deemer, as the department, you're basically the head of the police. We've had multiple police chiefs. It's your job to do something about that, and you have failed. And so it's your job to fire her, and you have failed. And you sit here and you just, you have these schemes to basically waste people's time to make it so they don't want to come. All of this is just like, do your fucking jobs. This is, this is mind blowing. You really are wasting not only everybody here's time, but their money as well, and acting like- and acting like it's somehow a good, you're doing a good job. You're doing a good thing. Oh, we got business done that we needed to. You have murderers walking around. Maybe you should deal with that. It really, for some reason, isn't a problem to you because it's not your kids. And it's crazy. I'm honestly disgusted by every one of you. And I, even Paul Patino, and I know your son, Paul. And I'm truly disgusted for all of you.
I am Harmony Patrol. Words are important. Dr. King said, "The arc of the moral universe is long, but it bends towards justice." Doctor, Dr. King was right. Some of us don't have time to wait an eternity for that justice to come. John Kennedy said, when it comes to civil rights and civil liberties, "Those who stand by and say nothing bring shame and invite violence." Mark Twain said, "Loyalty to your country always, but to your government when they deserve it." Our community needs to earn the trust again and build confidence. And that has to come from the dais of our city. We have just, what, nine more city council meetings and there's an election. And I'll stand with my community and vote for civil liberties, for human rights and for human decency. And we won't stop because it's a process that continues on. Each of us has to do our part. My question tonight, counsel, what can you do this year to heal this grievous wound in our community? And what does it mean to our city when we accomplish this together? Building through collaboration, through reciprocity, through developing a synthesis and process that we can have an affinity for community once again? Thank you.
Good evening. I also want to acknowledge that we aren't occupied, stolen, we outland. I think it's really ironic that y'all closed the council chambers to honor Martin Luther King's birthday, the same day that Charmaine Lawson was standing right outside to mourn her son for the 33rd month. And then the next day when we come, you uphold white supremacy. I just don't understand how you can honor that man and then the next day uphold white supremacy. I mean, Karen, like, I mean, I don't know if you want us to applaud you for staying after while everybody left in their cowardice. But when you speak to us for an hour saying that you're on our side, trying to like amplify your empathy or something, and you straight up say, actually, I can quote you because I wrote it down because I thought it was absolutely ridiculous. The students that were at that party that night, all of them, I mean, bright students. This was not, you know, a party full of criminals. When you stay with us for like over an hour trying to defend your point and then you uphold the very ideologies that perpetuate why Josiah, David Josiah Lawson got murdered, we're in this cycle. And so, yeah, I echo my comrade who brought that up earlier because you need to be held accountable for that. And so does everybody else here. You guys are perpetuating the very things that are murdering our black and brown people that you're extracting from, that come up here. I don't understand, why, why are you sitting there? Like, what made you become councilman or a city manager? Like, was it because you actually thought that you were going to do something good for the community? When you're trying to criminalize the very people that keep showing up to protect it?
Good evening. My name is David Lawson and I will be attending Humboldt State University in the fall. I go to Rancho Verde High School and I will be majoring in criminal justice to become a lawyer and probably enter politics. The word "man" has been thrown around quite often in today's society. You're not a man because of how strong you are. You're not a man because you're the best athlete in your school or have the flashiest clothes. Being a man of the 21st century is about the character of your heart. Being a man is so much more emotional than it is physical. To be a man, you have to stand up for what you believe in. You have to show love and compassion for others. It's a man who is honest and dependable. A man who stands by his word. A man takes care of the people around him and not just himself. To be a man is to be responsible. It is to feel shame at the sight of what seems to be unmerited misery. It is to take pride in the victories of our comrade. It is to feel when setting a single stone that one is contributing to the building of the world. Being a man in the 21st century isn't about the quantity of one's life, but about the quality of how you treat others.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Lawson. I will be attending Humboldt State University in the fall. I go to Rancho Verde High School and I will be majoring in criminal justice to become a lawyer and probably enter politics. The word "man" has been thrown around quite often in today's society. You're not a man because of how strong you are. You're not a man because you're the best athlete in your school or have the flashiest clothes. Being a man of the 21st century is about the character of your heart. Being a man is so much more emotional than it is physical. To be a man, you have to stand up for what you believe in. You have to show love and compassion for others. It's a man who is honest and dependable. A man stands by his word. A man takes care of the people around him and not just himself. To be a man is to be responsible. It is to feel shame at the sight of what seems to be unmerited misery. It is to take pride in the victories of our comrades. It is to feel when setting a single stone that one is contributing to the building of the world. Being a man in the 21st century isn't about the quantity of one's life, but about the quality of how you treat others. It's going to ring in my head. And it has, and I hope it rings in your heads here and anyone else who can hear it. We said it plenty of times that hopefully it's been broadcast in many, in many ways throughout the night and it will be again. And we will continue to be here because we want justice. And we'll see you here. I mean, that's really all we can do. Long live DJ.
Justice for Josiah.
Justice for Josiah.
So anyone else who has not spoken?
Yeah. So I walked up to this meeting and I usually come through the entrance down there and it was locked. And I said, oh my gosh, you gotta be kidding me. I had a, I had a hunch that this was happening. And then I got up all the way around through the muddy grass that doesn't need to be walked on right now. And then I came through the door and I saw all the cops. And I want to say, more cops is not the answer. More conversation is probably, more doing something is probably what you need to do. But I mean, I don't know all of the details of what happened that night, but I know that there were cops there and they didn't help David. So all these cops, it's really unfortunate that y'all are here tonight because y'all, I keep getting smiles, but you're obviously here to intimidate. And I feel really uncomfortable that the city council went along with this and that the chief, who is a really sweet guy, I thought, did this. And Karen, that you went along with it. And I mean, last meeting, it was nonviolent protests. They're loud, but they want to be heard. They're tired of this. Nobody got hurt. Nobody even got threatened physically. Why? Do we need like people in the front? People in the back? Everybody's got full stuff? I mean, are we going to get tased? What is the point? And really, I mean, all of taxpayer money is going to this to intimidate the citizens? I had to sit down because this is really sad. This is really, really sad. I'm probably, yeah. It's not appropriate. I wish you all had said something or done something differently. You need to do things differently in the future. I hope that you cops see that this is ridiculous and maybe choose to stand down. Don't do this. If somebody tells you to do something, if they're going to tell you to jump off a bridge, are you going to jump off a bridge? I mean, who are you protecting right now? You guys are wasting my money. You're wasting my time. I'm going to stand here for 20 seconds. I don't have anything more to say, but this is not okay.
Justice for Josiah.
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 If anyone else who has not spoken would like to speak on, matter or not on the agenda, please come forward.
You guys have a response?
Karen, anything further on the Police Foundation report?
We've had communication back and forth with them this week. I think what I have reported earlier is that we do expect to receive a report soon. I've hesitated to give a date because they have obviously missed many deadlines. And as soon as we do, you know, the council will be notified and we will move forward from there. But we certainly are in communications with them. There is some clarification, I guess, around. I received an email today that sort of outlined a process by which many comments were made at the last council meeting that there was a conversation between a good friend of the family's, David Josiah Lawson's family and Walt Tivitt from the Police Foundation. That was, happened, the actual conversation, it sounds like, and I need to verify this, happened in the March timeframe, at which point Walt apparently shared with this friend that the report was in final editing. I mean, I can confirm that that was the same information that the city received around that timeframe. I can't say to the exact date. When they went, we did not receive a copy of the report at that time. And when it went into final editing and ended up indicating that they wanted to go back and do another review of accuracy. And that's the, you know, the state that we've been in since then. So I have reached out to the Police Foundation to try to get them to clarify that directly back between the two people who had originally spoken. But that's probably the only update I have on that. And I haven't completely closed that loop yet.
I just wanted to say thank you for reading David Josiah's words. I found them beautiful and wonderful to hear. And I appreciated them being repeated because it helped me to hear them more and deeper. And so that was my experience there and I just want to thank you.
I have a follow-up question. Who are the two contact people that we have? Like, is there a way that we can also call and like hear from them? Who are, who have we been in contact with them? If the person who has been in contact?
Yeah. You certainly can reach out to me. I think, you know, closely thereafter, the Police Foundation did direct all communications back through the city. So, I mean, they do typically give me an update on, you know, messages they've received, but that they've directed to the city. So, you know, it is my hope that we just come to resolution on this, you know, at some point in the very near future. I think the best person to reach out to would be to reach out to me at this point if you want to have an additional conversation about that.
Have you guys, since it's taken them so long to do this, thought about hiring somebody else? Because it's time sensitive. And the longer it goes without your police department being properly fixed, the more possible problems you'll have. It's kind of doesn't seem like it's a big deal to y'all, but like, your officer's messed up. Your DMT's messed up. You really kind of need to at least the game plan on how you're going to fix that. And I would really like to hear like the council's response. Because Susan, I see you trying with, to thank somebody for reading those words. You've heard them before. We shouldn't have to read them for you. Those for the public on camera. But I get where you're coming from, but just thank. You guys are waiting out the block. I know 10:30 you gotta get out of here. But is there any, anything that any council members have to say about this? It's been 33 months.
Well, I'm very interested in hearing the Police Foundation report so that we can all see what they've concluded and that the information is complete. I think that's important. And unfortunately, they seem to be very unresponsive in speeding up the report coming to us and coming to the public.
So that's what I'm saying. If this is your child, you would probably looking, be looking at another organization to get the report done.
Or pressuring them more so that you did answer immediately? Because it is time sensitive.
I'm just saying that like, this doesn't seem like your only response to this case is waiting for the Police Foundation report.
So who can we call to, alone?
So there's no direct contact?
And no other, no other actions?
That's what you guys are doing for your job? That's what you're getting paid for to protect the citizens is you're sitting and waiting? That's just clear? Hope you guys understand why I'm like truly disgusted with you because you're public servants who would literally be telling me that you're just sitting and waiting on a private organization to send you a report when the contents of that report is vital to making your city safe. It is not safe. And this report is vital in you at least learning how it is not safe. You guys are winning, though. You're the ones getting paid.
So it's late, so I think we can skip council and staff reports unless there's something critical.
Does anyone want to report back about what, like, measures they've been taking? Has there been any more letters?
I don't have any updates. Karen Deemer would have the update when it comes.
Is there a personal responsibility taken by any personnel?
Sure. We're all responsible. And if each one of us can figure out something to do, go and do it.
So we are adjourned.